Okay, good evening. I'm calling this committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM in council chambers. I believe we have remote electronic attendance needed. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of First Ward Alderman Scott Williams, Second Ward Alderman Alvaro Macias, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Fourth Ward Alderman Matt Timian, Fifth Ward Alderman Sam Moyer, and Alderman-at-Large James Patrick Schmidt.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went. All in favor? I believe since we're online, I'd like to use roll call if possible.
Yes, we should on everything, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
And Alderman Waldron is absent this evening. Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Williams?
Wait, hang on.
Is he on?
You gotta unmute.
He's muted.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Can we continue on to the next?
Sure. Alderman has come in.
Aye.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
And are we going back to Alderman Williams? Is he on?
He's still away from his desk.
Okay. Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes.
Okay. You'll note another board appointment to the Human Rights Commission for a two-year term, and then we'll move to our proclamation this evening. A proclamation from the American Payroll Association to declare September 6th through 10th, 2021, as National Payroll Week. Whereas payroll professionals in Moline, Illinois play a key role in maintaining the economic health of Moline, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholding, reporting, and depositing; and whereas payroll professionals play an increasingly important role in ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify non-custodial parents and making sure they comply with their child support mandates; and whereas payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state tax officials to discuss both improving compliance with government procedures and how compliance can be achieved at less cost to both government and businesses; and now therefore, I, Sangita Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim September 6th through 10th, 2021, as National Payroll Week. Thank you. All right, that's for you, Ms. Park. We are going, as we did last week, in the interest of time and safety with numbers of people in the building, we're gonna add public comment here after this proclamation. So Chief Galt, is there anyone to make public comment? To this microphone, please. Mr. Gabbert?
Jim.
This one right here. I believe you'll be able to see our commenters, Alderman. Thank you.
For the record, I have my comments all down, and I can give a copy to everybody.
Okay.
I'm Jim Garment. I live on 2213 Seventeen, Moline, as I have since 1948. Several months ago... Can I take this off to speak?
No.
No.
We're under a mask mandate, sir.
I understand. Several months ago, I was in a business meeting, and at the close, I was asked what I thought of the fence at Carson Park coming down. I replied with surprise. That would be a surprise. That would be a mistake, okay? Supposedly, the plan was about to happen, and the neighborhood had approved it. The park board member that was talking to me, obviously suspicion that the neighborhood agreement was questionable, and I volunteered to inquire with the neighbors. This is how I got involved, okay? Note, some groups exaggerate buy-in due to self-interest and to acquired dollars. After receiving Eric's phone number, we discovered that no such agreement with the neighbors existed. I spoke with Eric, and we scheduled a park board meeting. Ten to fifteen residents attended. Mr. Wellward compared Sixteenth Street to Carstens, and I think the reply from some of the group was, "That was kinda like saying comparing New York City to San Francisco." John gave us a history of Carstens. We all lived there, and we all knew it. The group of us, eight or nine families, have 500 years' experience in the families living in that neighborhood. Few neighbor attendees were allowed to speak, and then Don wanted to recess even though more wanted to speak. During the following weeks, I, as well as others, spoke with present and former city administrators about the situation. I would thank, I will thank, all the aldermen, et cetera, that spoke with us, and we were ex- we had exceptional conversations. Don Griffin, who just, I believe, had to go to hospital, and I presented the council, and we both appeared to have been well received. Eric told us of a proposal to keep the fence and replace it the next year with a six-foot fence. Our concern is safety. Our concern is safety. Neighbors were pleased. Several thousand dollars was pledged for Carstens. I don't know if you're aware of that. We thought a partnership was started, and people were so pleased that city government works, and a comment was made to me, "It's refreshing to hear the city listen to the citizens." Neighbors were very pleased with Eric, but now the city is very mistrusted. Then came a private meeting, I guess with the park board. One can guess why. We were told there was gonna be a 90-day hold. This happened after 60 days. The thousands of dollars the neighbors were willing to donate towards a park are no longer available. There doesn't seem to be any partnership, and it appears that Eric, pardon me, somebody said, not my words, was thrown under the bus. Anticipatory design, which I experienced at Eric Company, does not exist for Carson's Park. We want to thank the mayor, the city council, for listening to us. Most people do not understand how unelected city representatives can make such a decision without council oversight. Recently, and my neighbor here took a little survey. Let me say this, and then you can explain more. He lives on the corner of Fifth Street, Twenty-second, and what, Twenty-third Avenue. Last night, between 3:30 and 4:00, he sat in the lawn chair and counted the traffic that goes by, a few feet from home base at that baseball time. In 30 minutes, 88 cars and buses passed within a few feet of that whatever. Entired, and then they go down the entire south side of the park. That is not including the traffic on Twenty-second, on Fifth, which is busy, and also on Sixth. I value, and I've always said, limited entry and exit is a value to the park. It prevents people from driving in and doing whatever. Real quickly, we would, are there people asking me, "Can we look at the minutes of what was approved for Carson Park? Can we look at the minutes? How was it explained?" And, you know, I understand this is down the road. I wish that we would've had an opportunity to get involved, because we don't wanna be negative. We don't wanna be negative. But I gotta quote Winston Churchill, "But if I agree with them, we both would be wrong."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have further comment?
Yeah, Mark Stevens, I live at 51023rd Avenue, so I'm right on Carson's Park. So yeah, I was the one that sat out yesterday, counted 88 cars in 30 minutes that drive by on that, on that road. I work from home, so I see traffic, I see people speeding down that road, I see people not stopping at the four-way stop. So I, I just think it's a hazard. I don't have a vested interest. I don't have the kids or grandkids that are over there playing in the park. However, I just think if that fence comes down, it's just an accident that's gonna happen, and I don't wanna be sitting at home and seeing a child get hit by a car, you know? It's just a busy area. The park, the ballpark's used a lot. We have people that park in front of our house, so it basically makes Twenty-third Avenue a one-way road. So you got people trying to navigate, you know, through there and not paying attention. My neighbor parks in front of their house, their car was hit and towed, you know, by somebody not paying attention. So we just think, you know, having a fence come down is just gonna be a danger to the, to the neighborhood and the children to play there. So just wanted to add that comment.
Thank you for that perspective. Appreciate your time. All right. Chief Galt, is there anyone else in this round?
Not four of us.
Okay. So we'll move to our presentation. Fiscal year, yes?
We do still have... Were you gonna go in this order right now?
No. No, that's according to the places on the, on the, where we had it on the...
Oh, so you're gonna ask for it after each item?
This is the second spot.
I see what you're saying.
This is the second spot.
Thank you for clarification.
And then at the end is the third spot, potentially.
The presentation is expected to be 30 to 45 minutes long.
Yep.
Jeanie, do you need a copy of that document for the public record?
Pardon me?
The notes from the gentleman who just spoke?
We just got them from Mr. Galt.
Okay. All right.
All right, we'll hear your public comments, sir. Can you tell us your name?
My name is Carl Dupoe. I reside at 409 Fence Line Drive, Bluegrass, Iowa. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight on behalf of the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150. We have been a staple in Moline and the neighboring Quad City communities for over 100 years. One of the biggest accomplishments of our local union, oh, I should tell you, I'm speaking on behalf of the RBO, as you already know, one of our biggest accomplishments of our local union is the number of local workers we have provided training to, which in turn created opportunities for them through partnerships with our signatory contractors. Probably the biggest showcase of how well this can work is the new I-74 project, which everybody knows right here in Moline. When infrastructure dollars are spent in our local community, the community succeeds when local workers are utilized in its construction. Where out of, when the out-of-state contractors come to town to build the new bridge, Local 150 was able to utilize local workers to provide the skilled labor to build such a complex project. We do not need to import workers from outside the area to fill these jobs. We use members living in our communities, which creates a direct impact for our community. How do local workers acquire the skills and utilize the infrastructure projects? Apprenticeship programs. So you might ask, do the unions put members through apprenticeship programs in hopes of another I-74 project to come along and same, someday? No. Our apprenticeship programs survive on the day-to-day projects that get done in our local communities. It is the opportunities these projects provide to create skilled workforce locally, so we can take advantage of the next I-74 project and build it with local workers. So as many communities focus on how we upskill our next generation of workers, again, the answer is apprenticeship programs. So one might ask, with all the proven benefits of having strong apprenticeship programs in our communities, why would anyone oppose to encourage the use of apprenticeship programs? You don't have to look far to see states and communities where they don't have support of skilled training, and as a result, they struggle with quality on municipality projects and fall short of growing and trained workforce to provide employees. What Moline is voting on tonight is exactly the kind of initiative that cities who want to support the community do. Cities who wanna grow look long-term on how they can have a greater impact with the dollars they spend locally every year. I applaud your vision on how you can help the community grow, and how you can increase opportunities for, for youth locally. I respectfully request your, I respectfully request your support, not only for, for apprentices now, but for also the next generation of apprentices that are sitting in school right now that will affect, that will be affected by you voting yes. I appreciate your time. Again, my name is Carl Dupoe. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I went through an apprenticeship program. Without the apprenticeship program, I probably wouldn't be standing in front of you right now as a business rep for Local 150, one of the biggest operating unions in the, in the Midwest. I wasn't going through an apprenticeship program. I came through the Marine Corps as a machinist welder, served in Iraq, came home, wasn't sure what I was gonna do. Luckily for me, a friend of mine was already in. I applied for their apprenticeship in 2008 when things were slim, was accepted, and made a great opportunity and great career for my family, as well as many other apprentices that have come in underneath me. I, I mentor our apprentices right here in the local area. I currently have around 55 apprentices, just in the operators alone. Total, totally, total, we have apprentices, which we're doing about five a year in this area for new apprentices, as the turnout keeps going with all the projects that, that are happening in the community. Are there any questions for me?
No, during public comment, thank you.
I appreciate it, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief's getting organized.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Michelle Decap, and I am the CFO and EEO Compliance Officer of Phoenix Corporation of the Quad Cities. You may know us as we've done quite a bit of work just down the street here on the I-74 corridor, so you probably have seen our, our barrier wall. We, I am here in support of the RBO that, that you have before you this evening, and Phoenix is also a member of the Associated Contractors of the Quad Cities, that I believe you all received an email from the president today in support of this RBO as well. Having strong apprenticeship programs can't be replaced. The in-person apprenticeship programs that the locals provide for our labor force allows our labor force to work most effectively, which then in turns saves the city taxpayers' money. If we're efficient and we can do something better because we have well-trained labor, then that saves the taxpayers' money. It also allows our people to work safer. There's nothing like in-person apprenticeship training. And I, and we do work on both sides of the river, so we have other places that we go that we do work that they do not have solid in-person training, and it's, it's a problem, so I can tell you that it's a problem. There's one example that I can tell you that on the Iowa side and some of these other things that don't have in-person training, they will give a flagger's card. Illinois requires in-person training to be a flagger on their projects. So you, you can do part of it online, but you do have to have that in-person training to actually be certified to do flagging in Illinois. So that's just one of the examples of safety, but there's, there's many, many others. So I just wanted to, to be here and support this RBO for effectiveness and, and safety, and we have, you know, a lot of experience in both, in both of those, 50 years of experience, to be honest, so.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Ally Topert Sallos. I'm with the Local 150, and I'm also a second-generation woman-owned business, disadvantaged business, small business owner. I'm an owner-operator with the Local 150, and I'm here in support of the RBO. I'm also a former alderman for the city of East Moline. In regards to the RBO being a disadvantage to small businesses, I, we were 30 years non-union, and the last six years, we have been union. In that six years, we have received the most trained, safety-conscious individuals that I can ever remember, and they have been great employees. When it comes to the taxpayers' dollar that goes into these projects, you want trained individuals. There was an example, actually while I was sitting on council, that we had a huge water main project, and the company that received the bid two years prior were not in the water industry, they were landscapers. So with that being said, you want the most responsible bidder, you want the most responsible employees that are going to look out for not only who they're working for, but also for the city. And I'm just here to say that it's not a disadvantage to small businesses like ourselves. We have been very successful, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Your Honor. Thank you for allowing us time. My name is Jack Lod. I am a resident and business owner and property owner in the city of Moline for the last 40 years plus. I have been involved in projects within the city of Moline as a independent, non-signatory contractor. We have provided services, we've provided employment for many people that live and work in Moline. Currently, half of our staff lives in Moline, and when we do a sign, a project for the city, those wages are required to be paid, which we're happy to pay. Those go directly into my employees' households, which they in turn then share within the city of Moline. I do agree that training, as part of the union's organization effort for training, I think it's great. They do a great job training. However, I want to tell you, they're not the only source of training that's possible to get qualified help. I have personally been training individuals in the construction environment for over 30 years myself, and I can tell you that having somebody that works consistently with the same organization, consistently, learns way more than being bounced to different organizations, which is the nature of a union organization. Those guys get to move around, which sometimes that's great. Once you're a journeyman, I think it's great. However, having some solid print that they can base from is just as much an advantage. So I do agree, training's great. Safety is uniform across the board. Almost everyone receives the same training for safety. Every shop, whether it's union or non-union, works to achieve safety. That is a fact. One of the things, Mayor, that you indicated, that there's a tremendous amount of support for an ordinance that inspires greater competition. I cannot see for the life of me how removing qualified, small, independent contractors out of this market makes you any more competitive. I believe that is not gonna change. That's gonna, it's going to change for the wrong direction. Your market will be less competitive, and your prices will go up, without a doubt. That is my opinion. I would like to see what studies has this council done that would show any of these things that have been stated by Alderman O'Brien, that it's a higher standard of workmanship, competition, and safety. I don't believe that there's been any study done that shows that that could be true. I would challenge the council to reexamine what they are trying to put forth, whether or not it's good for the city, good for the other 40,000 residents of the city of Moline, or whether it's just good for this council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think this is the RBO commenters. I'd like to bring forward the public record.
Okay, we have one, one more, or more than one?
I'm gonna go and check with Frank to see if he wants to talk about that. Right now, this is the only one.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Diane Moore, 1916, Glenwood Drive, Moline. I'm here to talk to you in regards to the public art ordinance, or the ordinance that you are working on. I am very concerned about the fact that there have been changes added to it in this last week that concern me. I would like to see this table so that people can take additional time to read through all 100 pages of this document, which seems to keep getting changes to it. And I think a lot of you have gotten an email from Barb Sandberg, who cannot be here today, that expressing some of her concerns. They have been addressed in some ways, but in, again, this is a document that is being changed again, and I think it's a big document. 100 pages is a lot. I like the idea of the public art, but I don't think you start out with a Disney world. You start out with a magic kingdom, and you work your way to bigger projects. This is starting out with the big and trying to keep it all organized and straight, and it gets very, very confusing. I have been involved in a couple of not-for-profit organizations and fundraisers, raising money for the hospitals and different, and for the symphony, and each year, everybody adds on to an event. You just don't leap in with a huge event. I also was surprised to see in the document the word "time to time," they can come to city council to ask for money. I must say, that's something I've never seen in a legal document, the expression of the word "time to time." I think that's rather vague. Also, I have expressed some concerns about the fact that if there's gonna be city council approval of our money going into this, that they are, this is made up of art people from the whole community, yet it is our money that is there spending, and that concerns me also. So I would just ask you to table this, and seeing as this is kind of a very small group here, and I know the rest of you are online, I still would like to see it tabled and at least go for another week, to give us people a chance to look at it again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Final in-person commentary.
This microphone, please, Mr. Aggie.
Good evening.
Evening.
Frank Aggie. I would like to address the public art. I've been working to, and hoping that we could include in our public art on the waterfront or some of the developments being done, that we would put in some artwork that would relate to the city's history. We have a gentleman by the name of David B. Sears, who's one of the founders of the city, put in the first dam on the Mississippi River, and the first mill, grist mill, flour mill, and sawmill, and was one of the major developers in starting the city. So I would like to see some of that history brought out in some of this artwork or whatever we do along the waterfront. So that's about all I have to say on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to the public for taking time to be engaged. I did want to make sure the record showed for that public that we have not made changes to the public art plan that were not spoken of during our meetings. There were simply, uh, how do we say that? We replaced the draft with the final version. Right. Electronic documents. So I just wanted to let the record show that there, nothing of substance was changed. Okay, now, to our guests, correct? Fiscal year 20... now to our guests, correct? Uh, fiscal year twenty-two pension obligation bond analysis. Ms. Barnes.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
For council's request, um, back in June, we are introducing the concept of introducing pension obligation bonds to help fund the city's unfunded pension liability in our police and fire funds. Anthony Micali, our financial advisor from Spear Financial, is with us tonight. And in a few minutes, he will be reviewing a couple of different scenarios um, for bonding levels to show the potential net savings to the city if council decides to move forward with issuing pension obligation bonds. I do want to say, um, you know, please note that there is no council action requested tonight. This is simply a presentation for discussion purposes only. And I'm going to start us off by giving a very brief, uh, review of the ten-year history in each of our police and fire pension bonds. And so I'm going to share my screen. And can everyone see my screen?
Not yet, Carol.
You say not yet?
Nope.
No.
Starting. There we go.
Okay, I'm so sorry. That took a little bit of a lag. Um, this first screen that should be in front of you shows a ten-year history of the city's contribution into both of the police and fire pension funds. And if you look along that, it's that first um, little chart on the total line, you'll see that city contributions have increased from six point two million dollars up to twelve point seven million dollars over that ten-year period. So again, it's a little more than doubled in that ten-year period. If we look at the next grouping then, at the pension assets during that same period, and assets are city contributions plus all the investments on that the city is currently holding. And the contributions and, or the assets grew from fifty-nine point three million up to eighty-seven point two million. That's about an eight, uh, forty-eight percent increase or about twenty-eight million dollars of additional assets. The next group shows over the ten-year period, our unfunded liabilities. And that's largely what we're going to be talking about tonight with Anthony. If you take a look where we were ten years ago, it was at sixty-seven point one million and it's grown to twenty, a hundred and twenty-nine million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And again, that's nearly doubled over that ten-year period. And what that is, is that, um, it's based upon the number of officers that we have, the wages that we pay our officers, the age of our census of police and fire, uh, fighters, the mortality rate, um, those people, the officers that are active and retired. It's all those things that are taken in from an actuarial standpoint to calculate those numbers. And the state has mandated that by the year twenty forty, we are required to fund our, both police and fire pension at a ninety percent level. So if we take a look down in that bottom box, for January one twenty-one, which is our most recent actuarial evaluation, police and fire pension are almost fifty percent there. They're almost at forty-five percent funded. And fire is lagging a little bit at thirty-five point five percent. So that's kind of the history and status of those funds. Any questions on, on those numbers?
No.
And if not, we will go to the next chart. And again, I'm going to go kind, kind of a hurry through these. So, you know, please stop me if, if you do have any questions. Both of the charts on this page show that although the city's contributions have more than doubled over the past ten years. So that's the blue bar and the red bar. Lots of contributions, um, they've doubled over the last ten years, but the increased contributions are not keeping pace with the growth of the total liabilities that we just looked over. And you'll see that the first five years, um, the back five years, that's where we kind of saw decreases in those funds, the funded. And then you'll see now that it's starting to creep back up. So it's stabilized and we're starting to see that funded ratio starting to increase. If we take a look at the next chart then, again, it's just presenting the, um, this chart is showing both of the assets versus the unfunded accrued liabilities. And it, both charts show that our pension assets are growing now these last five years, but we're still not keeping paces with the entire accrued liability. So in essence, what we are needing is more time. We're needing more years and we have out till the year twenty forty to get this fully funded. The next chart just shows contributions over the last thirty years. And obviously from thirty years ago, we grew from nine hundred and thirty-four thousand combined contributions up to a projected twelve million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand for two thousand and twenty-two. And then this is a chart, just to make it a little more visible. And the line chart up above is showing the total city's levy rate. And during, um, the current twenty twenty-one budget, seventy-six point three percent of the levy is going towards paying our pension obligation. And the remainder, um, between the bar chart and the line chart is going towards the parks and library levy rates. And this next chart is showing the historical return on, on the city's investments in the police and fire pension funds. And over the last ten years, our fire pension has earned eight point five eight percent and police has earned eight point nine three percent. And I might point out that over the last two years, the twenty twenty year and the two thousand and nineteen, which are the last full years, um, of audit, you will see that both of the funds were making four point, in excess of fourteen percent as well as in excess of twenty percent. So the last couple of years, um, the fund did very, very well. This next slide now brings us to kind of why we are presenting tonight. And you can see on the upper blue bar, that effective in two thousand and nineteen, the city is actually paying more in contributes, contributions towards the police and fire pension than we are actually paying in salaries to all of our police officers and firefighters combined. So if you look at that dark blue line, you will see that is the total wages that we put, pay all of our officers. And the light blue line is the total city's contribution into the pension. And going forward, um, it's getting to where it's almost unsustainable to be, it's like paying double in salaries to all of our police officers and firefighters. For comparison purposes, we look at the IMRF fund. And again, IMRF, very fortunately, we are currently a hundred percent funded. So that's the difference. I mean, we're unfunded in the police and fire pension, a hundred percent funded in IMRF. And the dark yellow bar on the top, that shows total wages across all of our employees. So everyone that is not police or fire is in this bucket. And then the light yellow bar or line down at the bottom is showing the total city contribution. And during, um, the last, uh, period of time here for IMRF in two thousand and twenty-two, we are projecting that we'll be paying about one point three million dollars in IMRF, up to about a little over two million dollars in thirty-seven, in two thousand and thirty-seven. And in comparison, if we go back up to the police and fire, in twenty twenty-two, we'll be paying about twelve point eight million dollars, up to approximately eighteen million by two thousand and thirty-seven. And so these next two charts here, um, I've kind of told you the history. And now for some good news. Periodically, the city needs to review accounting or actuarial assumptions in our annual report. And the last time that staff took an in-depth review with our actuaries was back in two thousand and sixteen, when we moved the assumptions from a hundred percent funding, um, into two thousand and thirty-six. So we moved it up to a hundred percent funded by two thousand and thirty-six. Four years earlier than the state mandate. So after talking with Bob, and then I also called, um, Lotterbach, our actuaries, Lotterbach and Eamon, we had a very in-depth discussion over a couple of days. We reviewed the current status, funding status of both of the funds. We projected what the potential rate of return on investments will be when the state takes it over. And they did a whole new set of calculations. And after doing that, um, staff and Lotterbach jointly are recommending resetting our funding assumptions from one hundred percent by two thousand, um, thirty-six, out to a hundred percent by two thousand and forty. And that exceeds the state mandate of ninety percent by twenty forty. So we should feel really, really good that we are shooting towards funding at the hundred percent level in twenty years. And stretching out the funding by four years, it will lessen the burden on our current taxpayers. And we project that the savings will be between one point six and two point six million dollars annually for each years out to two thousand and thirty-six. So we're just really, really happy to be presenting that recommendation from our actuaries. And with that additional funding as we move into the budget, you know, council has lots of different priorities to consider. But one priority that we've discussed in the past is potentially helping the parks and library, uh, budgets. Some of their levy money in, in past years has been reduced in order to help pay for the pensions. And now there's an opportunity to maybe move at least part of those funds, um, back into those two funds. But that is entirely up to council. It's, it's, it's just a recommendation that I'm throwing out there for consideration. I'd also like to say, what has enabled us to get this point to consider moving out, um, at the hundred percent level to two thousand and forty, is because both of the police and fire pension boards have been doing an excellent job managing the funds and all of the investments and getting the types of returns that we were getting. So we have to give them a lot of credit. And in addition, I would like to just throw out, um, that Lotterbach has heard rumblings. This is not fact, it's just from many meetings that they have attended, that with the consolidation of assets with the state in our police and fire pension funds, that the state may, and the word is may, may be changing its minimum funding level for the mandate out to two thousand and fifty. So we may actually be hearing that, um, here over the next couple of years.
Okay.
There's also a possibility that they may be lowering the funding requirement down to eighty percent. So it could be even as low as eighty percent by two thousand and fifty. And that's occurring because so many cities are underwater. So we have to feel really good right now that we can realize some savings and we can potentially meet that obligation of a hundred percent out to two thousand and forty. And if the state changes their minimum mandate, you know, we will certainly bring that back to council for, for any changes, um, to consider. But, um, right now, I think we're on track and the potential is some really good savings to realize.
Okay, thank you so much, Carol. Are we turning it over to our guest? Or do we have questions for Carol at this point?
Yes, we're gonna move it here, um, to, to Anthony. Anthony Micali from Spear Financial. Are you with us, Anthony?
I'm here. Thanks, Carol. Appreciate that. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so good evening, everybody. Um, and thanks, Carol, for that lead-in. I'm gonna go over the concept of pension obligation bonds. And I, I've been working with Carol on running a few different analyses, uh, for you all tonight. Uh, please stop me and ask any questions as we go through. Um, the, the idea, before we get into the presentation, the idea of a pension obligation bond is one that's been around for a while. Um, and, and it really, if you boil it down simply, is you, uh, as, as the city of Moline would be borrowing money via a bond issue and taking the proceeds of that money and investing it with your pension fund. So you replace your unfunded liability that you currently have with a bond liability. And, and I'll explain kind of how that works, what the potential benefits are of a, of a financing like that, and what the potential risks are of a financing like that through this presentation. There we go. So, uh, as of January first twenty-one, uh, as Carol had mentioned, the total unfunded liability for the city's police and firefighters pension plans was just over one hundred and twenty-nine million dollars. So it was sixty, about sixty-two million for the police pension plan and sixty-seven point seven for the firefighters. Again, the current statutory minimum is to fund ninety percent of that unfunded liability by twenty. Currently, as Carol had mentioned, the city uses, uh, a funding, uh, of one hundred percent by twenty thirty-six. So you are currently funding more rapidly, much more rapidly than the state minimum. Uh, you assume a seven percent actuarial rate of return and a three point two five percent annual payroll growth rate, uh, for amortizing that liability. Uh, so with that, under these assumptions, just the payment for your unfunded liabilities is expected to increase from about eleven point one million in two thousand twenty-two to over eighteen million by two thousand and thirty-seven. This is a chart showing the, uh, the payments, the expected payments to amortize that unfunded liability. Uh, again, broken down into police and fire. And, uh, these, these payments to, to amortize the liability assume a hundred percent funding by twenty thirty-six slash twenty thirty-seven. It's the twenty thirty-six actuarial valuation, which would be paid by the city in twenty thirty-seven. Um, we can, you can go to the next page, Carol. So the other part of your annual payments to your pension system is the normal cost. Um, currently in two thousand twenty-one, your total normal cost payment was, uh, just under one point six million, which was about eight hundred and forty-four for the police pension plan and seven hundred and forty-three, uh, thousand for the firefighters. Uh, the normal cost is unaffected by the issuance of pension obligation, uh, bonds. Uh, and totally unaffected by the funding levels in your pension plan. This is something that is separate from the payments to your unfunded liabilities. Uh, for this analysis, we did bring in the normal cost just so you can get a representation of what your total payment to the pension system is. And we've assumed that the normal cost is going to grow by three point two five percent. So the chart on page five shows the total expected pension payments over the life of the, uh, amortization of the unfunded liabilities. So from, from your payment next year in twenty-two all the way through, uh, thirty-seven, including the blue bar, which is going to be the normal cost payment. You can see there's, there's, there's quite a rise due to the growth in those unfunded liability payments. Now this assumes that all actuarial assumptions are met. So this assumes the seven percent, uh, investment rate of return plus the three point two five percent payroll growth. Those are the assumptions used by Lotterbach and Eamon. So if you think about your unfunded liabilities as a liability, as just that, a liability that grow, that, that accrues interest at seven percent. What pension obligation bonds are, are taxable GO bonds that are issued by the city. And you use the proceeds of those bonds to replace that unfunded liability or to pay off in essence that unfunded liability and replace that then with a bond liability. The, the goal is to lower that, uh, that rate that you're charged on, on the liability. So in, in your case, right now, your, your assumption is a seven percent, um, rate on your unfunded liability. So in your case, right now, your assumption is a 7% rate on your unfunded liability. Right now, our, and I'll get into the numbers shortly here, but right now with a pension obligation bond issued to the current term of your unfunded liabilities, which is out through 2037, you're looking at a total all-in bond interest rate with all costs included of about 2.34%. So you would be lowering your liability, which is charging you interest at 7%, to a liability at 2.34%. And again, POB proceeds do not replace or pay normal costs. Normal cost is an operating expense and we wouldn't use bond proceeds to pay an operating expense. Go to the next page, Carol. And I know, I apologize, this is hard to see on the screen here if you're looking at a laptop like I am. But just to walk through this chart and how a pension obligation bond issue would work, the first column right after the years is, sorry, something just popped up on my screen, is your current expected payment for your unfunded liabilities. This is the amount calculated by your actuary. So again, from '22, you're gonna, your expected unfunded liability payment is about 11.1 million. That grows to over 18 million by your 2037 payment year. So that's essentially the before picture. The next set of columns would be what we would replace that with, with a pension obligation bond. And that would be a taxable general obligation bond. You've got your principal column, your estimated interest rate, and then the interest that's paid annually and your total payment. You'll see that the total payment for that bond is just under $10 million a year. And then your final column in the blue is the estimated or assumed savings from the issuance of the pension obligation bond. And I'm looking, it looks, if you look at the total there, you're just over $71 million in total savings. Now, one thing to point out is that that is assumed savings. And that's important to note because, you know, when we've met prior and I've shown refundings and I show what the savings is gonna be from refinancing an existing bond, that's actual savings. You know, the debt service on the new bond is less than the debt service on the old bond. And I can say that this is how much the city is gonna save. With a pension obligation bond, it doesn't exactly work like that. These savings assume all assumptions are met, all existing assumptions are met, which means that you've got to, the savings assume the actuarial rate of return is met. So in order to achieve the savings, when the city were to bond for the unfunded liability and place those dollars with the pension fund, the pension fund would have to earn the 7% return rate over the life of this bond issue in order to achieve those savings. That's one of the reasons when we talk about pension obligation bond issues, that there has to be a high level of savings. This can't be something where you only save 5 or 10%. You know, in this case, we're talking about over 40% present value savings. And that is because the inherent risk is that you're not gonna make those market returns. And you're not gonna get that level of savings. However, you've seen the past performance of your pension fund. And there's, you know, the idea obviously is that over a long-term period, you're gonna, you're gonna have returns that should match your actuarial rate of return. Go to the next page. This, just so you can see, you know, in a different way to show how the savings are calculated, what you've got here is your expected normal cost moving from left to the right. Again, this is current normal cost, we've assumed a growth of 3.25%. Plus your current unfunded liability payments equals the total current pension payment. So this is the current pension payment of the city with the essentially do-nothing approach. Leave 100% funding by 2036 and continue to pay that with your normal cost. Then we subtract the bond payments from the POB issuance and also then subtract what you're also gonna continue to pay, which is the normal cost. And you're left with the potential savings from the POB bond issue. This chart represents the difference in payments as well. The purple line at the top is again, your total current payment. That is the normal cost plus your existing unfunded liabilities payment each year. The blue bar represents the normal cost, which again, do not change and do not go away with the issuance of POBs. And then the green bar represents the debt service on the pension obligation bond issue. So the difference between the blue and the green bars combined versus the purple line is the potential savings from the issuance of the bonds. Switching gears just slightly, one of the things that Carol had mentioned is that you are currently amortizing your unfunded liabilities 100% to 2036. The state minimum is 90% by 2040. Carol had mentioned the recommendation of looking to extend the amortization period from 2036 to 2040. This chart, or graph I should say, represents what that might look like on a budgetary basis for the city. You've got your blue normal cost, again, do not change, that's gonna be a constant. The green bar at the top represents the total payment again, which is gonna be the total normal cost plus current unfunded liability payments which run out to 2036 slash payment year 2037. And then the red bar represents the unfunded liability payments assuming you extended the amortization to 2040 at 100% funding. So you'll see the difference between the blue and the red bars combined versus the green line is the annual budgetary savings from extending that amortization period to 2040. This page is the chart that kind of backs into that, that graph that we just saw. Again, you've got your normal cost, oh, you're just one too far. Your normal cost payments, which are the same, have been the same in all of the charts. Your current unfunded liability payment, which goes from 11.1 to over 18 million in 2036, equals your total current pension payment. And then you'll take a look here, you've got the extended unfunded liability payment. So this now is the expected unfunded liability payment by changing your amortization method to 100% by 2040. So now instead of going from 11.1 million to 18 million, you're going from 9.5 million to 17.5 million. And then again, now removing the normal cost and that new extended unfunded liability payment gets you to your expected budgetary savings from this move, which is about 1.7 million to just over 2.6 million from '22 through '38, or '37, payment year '22 through payment year '37. So building on the thought that you can extend this amortization period, what I've done is create a pension obligation bond structure whereby you do make that move. So now rather than a 2037 final payment, we have a 2041 final payment. So it's the 2040 actuary year, 2041 payment year. And again, going through this chart, the far left is the expected unfunded liability payment assuming that 2040 amortization versus your current 2036 amortization. The new pension obligation bond amortization, again, extending to 2041 to match the new liabilities. Your annual debt service on this issue to fund 100% of the unfunded liabilities is approximately $8.5 million. Savings on this, and this is extremely hard to read, I apologize, savings is just over 90 million, or expected savings is just over 90 million by funding 100% of the unfunded liabilities, approximately $129 million with pension obligation bonds. Again, this is the chart backing into those numbers just in a different method. You've got your normal cost, again, that has not changed. Your unfunded liability payment is that fourth column. And that is the unfunded liability payment, again, assuming the extended amortization period. And that gives you your total pension payment, assuming the longer amortization period. That, then we subtract the POB bond payments, which are approximately $8.5 million a year, and subtract your normal cost, which will give you your potential savings from the issuance of POBs. This chart is the representation of that. Again, the purple line is the total pension payment assuming the extended amortization and including your existing normal cost. The blue is the normal cost, which hasn't changed. And then the green represents the annual payment for the pension obligation bonds. The difference between the green and blue bar chart and the purple line is the potential savings from the issuance of the POBs, 100% funding with a 2040 amortization. This next chart, one thing we really wanted to get across is that with POBs, you don't have to issue 100%. You don't have to fully fund the liability. There are a number of risks associated with pension obligation bonds that we're gonna talk a little bit more about very soon. Some of those risks may make people uneasy with doing such a large issuance. We're talking with 100% funding, $130 million in general obligation bonds, which is a very large issuance. So, you know, one of the options to consider and to think about is doing a portion of the unfunded liabilities with POBs. And just to represent that, I created this scenario where we did the extended amortization of 2040, but then funded half of the unfunded liability, a little over $60 million, with pension obligation bonds. So this is 50% funding, 7% rate of return with the extended amortization. So the only difference here that you're gonna see versus the other charts we've seen is we still have, that first column is exactly the same. That's the current unfunded liability payments. We then have the amortization of the POBs, the pension obligation bonds, with debt service just under $4.3 million a year. And to the right of that, we have a remaining payment for the unfunded liabilities that we have not funded through the issuance of POBs. So if we fund 50%, you're still gonna have 50% of that liability outstanding. And that equates to an ongoing payment of 4.7 million in '22 up to about 8.7 million in '41 for that remaining liability that we did not fund with POBs. Savings on this are estimated at $46 million, just over $46 billion over the life of the issuance. And again, assuming all investment assumptions are met over that life. Again, we've got the third column in is the normal cost, which has not changed. The unfunded liability payment, assuming the extended amortization, equals the total current pension payment, assuming the extended amortization. We then have the subtracting of the POB bond payments. This time, since it's a smaller bond issue, for only 50% of the liability, it's $4.3 million annually. And again, you have the remaining unfunded liabilities for the unfunded liabilities that we did not fund with POBs that are outstanding. The column to the right of that, that range between 4.7 and 8.7 million dollars over that amortization period. Subtract the normal cost and that would equal the potential savings. Now, what you see on this chart is a little bit different than what we saw in the others. We've got the purple line still that shows the existing payment, normal cost plus unfunded liability payment. You've got your blue normal cost that remains outstanding. The green pension obligation payments for the 50% that we funded, the 50% of unfunded liabilities. And then the red bar now, which has been added, is the remaining unfunded liability payments that we did not fund. The difference between the three bars, red, green, and blue versus the purple line is the potential savings from the POB issuance. So with the issuance of pension obligation bonds, the benefits of those, you can generate savings assuming that your investment targets are met. So that's the biggest catch here. You know, you think about what you're doing and you just boil this down as simply as possible. You are borrowing money to invest money. These savings that are shown assume you're making the 7% return that is used by your actuary. So if you make that 7%, you earn those savings. If you make less than the 7%, you're gonna make less than the savings stated. If you make the bond rate, if you make, you know, if over 20 years, the rate of return on the investment and the assets that you deposited from the bonds makes the bond rate, you broke even. So the way you wanna think about this is, you know, the risk is always that I'm gonna make at or less than the bond rate. Anything above that has made savings. So, you know, where's the middle ground? Where do we feel comfortable that we're gonna make more than the all-in cost of these bonds? Or are we comfortable that we're gonna make somewhere near the investment return? But that's, you know, those are the potential benefits weighted versus the risk of, you know, what does this cost to issue? The second bullet here, and I didn't touch on this in the numbers, but I think it's important to note, POBs provide the city flexibility to structure your payment for your unfunded liability to best suit your needs. And what that means to me is you're able to level out that payment. When you look at what you're gonna be paying for your unfunded liabilities over time, that payment's gonna continue to grow at this unsustainable pace. Pension obligation bonds, if the program works the way it's supposed to, means you're leveling out that payment so that, you know, maybe the savings next year is a million dollars or less. But if you continue to earn at that 7%, by the time you've hit 2040, you're saving multiples of that because you've leveled out the payments versus the structure where the annual payment for your unfunded liabilities continues to increase. The idea of a POB is that you're lowering now the hurdle rate that you need to achieve in your assets to the bond rate. Again, this is kind of the concept of you're borrowing money to invest in. Right now, every time you don't make that 7%, you're adding to your unfunded liabilities on your current, versus your current unfunded liabilities. If we take that unfunded liability, replace it with a bond rate, we need to, for just that portion of the liabilities which we've now moved, we need to at least make more than the bond rate. So we've lowered that liability from the actuary 7% to a bond rate which is gonna be between 2.5 and 3%, depending on how long the term of the bonds is. The next bullet I touched on, the bullet after that, no material increase in the city's obligations. So again, the idea here is that we're replacing a current obligation, a current liability, with a bond liability. We're not adding additional liabilities to the city. And with that, rating agency treatment is expected to be neutral overall. We've done a number of these already, I found that to be true. I will say that you do have to be aware of how you structure these bonds. And what that means is, what you don't wanna do with a pension obligation bond is be doing the bond issue to create immediate savings or immediate budgetary relief, essentially using the bond issue to kick the can down the road. You don't want to extend the amortization much farther than what you're assuming with your actuarial. your actuarial results. You know, you want this to be a true replacing one liability from another, not restructuring the liability. Now, with the risks of POBs, the principal risk, and if you read through the GFOA guidance on this, you know, frankly, the GFOA is against it, and the principal risk that they state that is applicable to the way that these bonds are typically structured is this first bullet point. The principal risk of a pension obligation bond is that the earnings on the proceeds will be less than the borrowing rate of the POBs. So, over 20 years, you've got to be comfortable with the fact that you're borrowing money and you need to make more than the rate on the POBs over that period of time, or else this financing did not work. Right now, the all-in cost of the POBs is between 2.5% and 3%. Using round figures here because of the fact that we're talking about two different amortization periods, really. You know, just to put this into context, this concept of pension obligation bonds has been one that's been around for a very long time. It's gaining a lot of traction now, and a lot of, you know, people, especially in the Quad Cities area, are really considering these. The reason they are, and the reason that this has gained so much traction recently, is because taxable interest rates are so low. Before, when we were looking at POBs and we were talking about issuing 20-year taxable bonds at 4% or 5%, when you're talking about lowering your rate from 7% to 5% and then needing to beat 5% every year for your returns, there's a good amount of risk that stays. You know, people aren't as comfortable with saying, "Well, no, my bogey rate is 5%." Well, lately, we're doing these bonds and we're under 3%, which makes the risk a little bit more palatable. The second bullet, we've touched on a number of times, the city will still be responsible for the payment of normal cost. So, similar, talking about your IMRF, you're 100% funded in IMRF, which means you do not have a unfunded liability payment for IMRF. However, you still pay your normal cost each year. That would be exactly the same for this system if we paid 100% of your police and fire. You still have your normal costs on top of your POB bond payments. The city can experience future unfunded liabilities which need to be amortized and paid on an annual basis. So, if we did this tomorrow and paid off your unfunded liability, and for a number of reasons that are possible, one is you had poor investment returns. There was a change in actuarial assumptions mandated by the state. You decided to change actuarial assumptions. Some mortality tables changed. Something created additional unfunded liabilities. Those unfunded liabilities would then have to be amortized over your amortization period if it's out to 2040. And then, that payment would then have to be made on top of the bond payment and on top of the normal cost. Pension obligation payments represent a fixed liability that has to be paid each year. So, one of the differences between your current liability and a bond payment is your bond payment under no circumstances can be missed or changed. You can't adjust the actuarial assumptions to lower the payment. It has to be made each year, or else it's an event of default. At the closing of the POBs, the city would send bond proceeds to the pension fund for an investment. So, you do not, as a city, have direct control over those funds. This does represent a large investment at one point in time. So, you know, from the standpoint that you're doubling pension assets or more with a POB bond payment, that needs to be communicated with the pension funds and their investment managers, assuming that the consolidation hasn't happened yet, so that they understand that and start to mitigate those risks of how they're going to phase that money in over a period of time. One thing Carol and I discussed is if there were to be any federal bailouts of unfunded pension liabilities and you had funded those already, there'd be no opportunity to capitalize on that opportunity. State funding targets can be moved, which Carol had mentioned before. So, what that means is, say, we fund 100% of the liabilities using bonds, and in five years, the state says, "We're going to move the target to, you know, 80% by 2050." At that point, you've done the bond issue. You could certainly make that change on any new unfunded liabilities that had been created and amortize those over a longer period of time. But until we can refund the bonds, which is 10 years down the road, we can't change the amortization on the bond issue. And then, the final bullet here is uncertainty over state pension fund consolidation. You know, there's a number of things to think about here. Ultimately, you're not 100% aware of how things are going to get invested and moved. I think we all have hopes that it's going to be a smooth and a good transition, but it adds a level of uncertainty right ahead of funding that bond issue. So, I believe that's the last slide I had. So, Carol, I'll turn it back over to you, unless there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Anthony. This last slide, I'll go through it very quickly. It's just a summary of everything that Anthony presented. The first blue bar that is labeled number one, that shows our existing assumption, actuarial assumption, at 100% funding at 36. If we do indeed, which we are recommending, moving to the 100% out to 2040, that is number two. And if you take a look at the footnote, if we moved to number two, as we mentioned before, that will save the city between $1.6 million and $2.7 million annually. And then, in the last four years, we'd still be responsible for those last four years of unfunded payments. If we go to number three, which is the 50%, the total savings could potentially be $2.2 million up to $4.5 million annually for a total of $46.6 million. And on each one of these scenarios, you'll start seeing how those payments are starting to level out. And then, at 100%, it's almost virtually flat, aside from the growth in your normal cost. 100% bonding would save us between $2.7 and $9 million annually on the back end for a total of $93 million. And again, that's the most stable one. And with that, Anthony, you're both, we are both here. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them.
I did see Alderman Went's hand go up. You can also unmute and just say I have a question.
All right. Thank you, and thank you, Anthony, very much for your presentation. I think this is great. Great. And as you said, a few years ago, Alderman Schumaker and I kind of talked about it, but with the interest rates at the time, I think that the risk was a little high. But now, if there was ever a time, this seems to be it. Because quite honestly, if we're only getting 2.5% or 3% on our returns, the city's going to go bankrupt trying to catch up on our pension bounds, or we're going to have to double our property tax to do it anyway. And so, but I do have a couple of quick questions for you. I think I caught when you said there is a prepayment penalty or reissue if, within 10 years, is that?
Yep. Municipal bonds are typically callable within, after 10 years, I should say, not within 10 years.
Okay, so after 10 years, at that point, we could do a prepayment, but not before then, but...
Yep. 10 years is the standard. We regularly issue bonds with nine 10-year calls. So, it'd be anytime after the call date, we could call the bonds in at par, no prepayment penalty.
Okay, perfect. And then, you had said something about, you know, once we do this, that obviously, we're locked into our interest in principal payments over the life of that. But I guess one of my questions is our normal cost. Since in your presentation, we were going to do 100% of this, so let's say we're going down that scenario. If at some certain year, we had another pandemic, something weird happened or whatever, is there the possibility, because we would be meeting the state standard of at least 90% or whatever, that we wouldn't pay our normal cost that year, and that would just add to or reduce us from 100% down to 97% or 98% or something like that? Is that the ability, or is there something within the statute that requires us to, if nothing else, put in the normal cost for that particular year?
That's a good question, and I don't know that I have an answer as to the requirements on paying your normal cost. And I understand what you're saying, certainly. You're 100% funded. If you were to not pay your normal cost, that would be, you know, an unfunded liability for tomorrow, essentially. And what I guess what I would say is, you know, let's suppose we're several years down the road and you do have a new unfunded liability that's, you know, risen over time, but you're essentially still, you know, 96% funded. I can see a scenario where you're not making a payment towards that unfunded liability because you're already well enough funded that you don't need to. You're currently making the state minimum already. But I apologize, I don't know state law-wise if you need to make the normal cost payments or if it's just a matter of courses that that's what you do.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate it. I'm just trying to, if we're going to go down this path, to put in at least a modicum of flexibility into it. So, if we could find out that answer, I think that that would help. I mean, obviously, the other option is to fund at 90% or 80% and then be able to flex it as we kind of go if something goofy would happen. And I just want to make sure that this is communicated to everyone. Clearly, obviously, if we're making less than the assumed 7%, then we'll start to slowly fall behind a little bit. But like is, our average over the last 10 years has been at 8. whatever percent that we actually could wind up increasing our percentage. And so, you kind of get into this, if our average over 10 years is at 8% and you, we funded at 100%, we could find ourselves funded at 110% by the time we get to the end of this, if history is a, any guide on this, is that correct?
Right, right, right. And I think in that situation, there is a mechanism whereby you have an opportunity not to necessarily have to pay your entire normal cost if you're overfunded and use the additional balance as a credit to some degree.
Okay. If you could find out that, that would be great. I think from your presentation, I'm probably leaning more towards a 90% or an 80% funding still gives us some flexibility, but clearly, that flexibility on the normal, I think, would be interesting and I think something we should take into account. Because I really think, I've seen, since I've been on council, basically, what we've been paying in almost double, and we're losing ground on this. And if we don't nip this in the bud and figure out a way to normalize this, other departments, like we said, library and parks, while they still have gotten their complete budget, it's not coming from the property tax levy like it has historically. And I think it's just a good idea to be able to categorize those things and, you know, if we can realize the savings over this period of time of even half of what you're proposing, you know, I mean, saving $50 million, you're all of a sudden talking about real money. So, thank you very much for your presentation.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Any other questions from the council?
Alvaro Macias, Alderman Macias?
Yes, Mr. Macias.
I have a question. Thank you, Your Honor. Is there a window of timeframe that, let's say, we make a decision that we want to move, as interest rates start ticking back up, is there a chance that we might miss on the best time to put something up or make a decision?
Sure. So, I would say yes, interest rates are extremely low. We've had a really outstanding year from the issuance standpoint. And, you know, interestingly, we've enjoyed very low taxable interest rates, which makes this financing look the way it does because these bonds have to be issued on a taxable It's a tough question. I certainly don't know where interest rates are going to be next year. I hope they remain this low. I think from a city council standpoint, you've got to kind of balance the low market rates and the burden at hand with the weight of this decision. And you certainly don't want to rush a decision of this magnitude in order to try to capture tomorrow's interest rate. From a timing standpoint, on the issuance of these bonds, it's typically about a three month process. So, typically, how we would do that is, you know, we would come back with an ordinance. We could set not to exceed numbers in the ordinance for a maximum rate that you'd be willing to accept, you know, get in the market as soon as we can, assuming rates maintain their level or at least stay within that parameter that you've set as a city council. But again, you know, with, even if you said go today, it's going to, it takes a while to get these into the market with putting together official statements and going to the rating agencies. So, really, we're not locking in interest rates for another two months, closing for another three.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah. Is there any real fear that interest rates are going up? Is that something that's on the horizon? Because it seems like they've been pretty low for quite a while.
Yeah, and I certainly don't disagree. There's been, you know, certainly talk at the Fed level about, you know, reducing the asset purchases, you know, to the extent that's keeping short-term rates low, you know, if that starts to phase off. But then again, you know, that's been now out for a week, and we haven't seen really any movement in the Treasury. Municipal rates have continued to remain low. I'm hopeful that at least in the, you know, the short term, the next couple of months, we're not going to see any wild swings in interest rates. But, you know, things change and things change in a hurry. So, you know, I think, gosh, I remember doing a taxable bond issue in 2006 when the 10-year Treasury was 4% and saying, "I don't know how it goes any lower than this." And it's a 1.3 now, so...
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Went.
Thank you. I think that we, I completely agree with the interest rates and not chasing it because it has been, well, it's historical, it's never going to get lower, you know? But I think that the other thing that we have to consider here is really what the arbitrage is, is that if we're not doing this, we're also missing out of the spread between what we're paying in the interest rate and what we presumably can, over time, get from the market. And if historically speaking, we're sitting around 7%, 8% of it, if we, the longer we wait, that's more time that we're not capturing that arbitrage, that increase. And so, with that, I'd like us to, the DREX staff, to come back with a modeling at 90% if we are able to flex the normal cost, or at 85% if we're not able to flex the normal cost. Does that make sense, Anthony?
Yes, it does.
Is that what the council would like?
Yeah, I like, I mean, that's my opinion. I'd love to hear what other people...
I need to get consensus from the council on whether they want that work from staff. I see a thumbs up from Mr. Moyer and Mr. Timian and Mr. Macias, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. O'Brien, you're here in the room?
Sure.
Sure, he says. And Mr. Williams, you're going to have to unmute.
Where'd he go?
He's not calling. He might be trying to speak with us. Well, you have a majority of those here that are interested in seeing that, so...
Okay, so repeating those numbers, and it's 85.
Yes, can you repeat that, Mr. Went, for our clerk and our administrator?
Sure. 90% if we're able to flex the normal payment, 85% if we're not.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Question, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I just, and you spoke to this a little bit, Anthony, but as we look to like the GFOA's recommendations and, and I read that, but it, it seems like they're mostly warning against trying to use this as a tool to get out of a worse situation. Is our financial situation at this time making that a much less risky? And that's what I'm hearing, I guess. And I just want to hear that again, that because of where we're at, we're in a better place to do this than a lot of what they're warning against. Yeah, in, in the GFOA guidelines for pension bonds, they, they name a number of reasons that they do not support pension obligation bonds. And it really, it's that first reason that they list that's applicable here, which is the risk that you're not going to earn more than the cost of the pension bonds. They then go on to a number of different things that aren't necessarily applicable because of the way that we are looking to structure these things. And one is, for instance, that you're using it for immediate budgetary relief. So imagine that we, we refinanced the, or, you know, we funded 100% of the liabilities, but then didn't amortize any principal for 10 years. We pushed everything out as far as we can just to get you guys budgetary savings immediately. Well, that's a huge negative. You're taking your liability and you're just going to pay interest on it for 10 years. You're kicking the can so far down the road with the use of this financing. Another thing that many people got, got into several years ago was getting into the investment of the funds, you know. There was school districts in Wisconsin, for instance, that did the pension obligation bonds coupled with investing the proceeds in collateralized debt obligations when those were AAA. And then they lost all of their money because they took all of their proceeds and instead of what we're talking about, giving it to the pension fund to invest, who has to invest with, with strict guidelines, give, putting all of that in, in a, in an investment that's, you know, that's guaranteed, quote unquote. And then beyond that, they talk about things like, like swaps, you know, utilizing interest rate swaps and, and other risky financing mechanisms that also we would not be doing here. We're talking about issuing fixed rate bonds. So, so a lot of their, their negatives go towards kind of things that had been done in the past to, to make this look like a better financing and adding a lot of risk to the city as well as, you know, extending amortizations and kicking the can down the road, things like that.
Thank you. That's how I was reading it, but I appreciate your more professional opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? I think we will move on now. Thank you so much for all of that helpful information.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the agenda items. Number one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute as to an agreement between the special service area number five board and NAI Rule Commercial Company for property maintenance services for special service area number five for a one-year contract with voluntary renewal each of the following two years, beginning September 1, 2021. Is there a motion?
I don't know, we're going to discuss, apologies.
Yeah. Did you have anything?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Bob.
That's, that's totally all right, Madam Mayor. I think it's a pretty straightforward issue. We, we have a recommendation from the special service area number, number five board recommending approval of an agreement with NAI Rule Commercial Company. I think this will be the first time we're using them. It's not the first time they're doing business here in town privately and based on the visit received and the given expiration date is September 1, we would like to get this approved this evening if at all possible.
I get a motion.
Yes.
Timian?
I need a motion to approve.
I need a motion to approve.
If there's any questions.
Yep.
And I'll second it so you don't have feedback.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Discussion. All right, hearing none. All in favor, roll call please.
Thank you.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
He's having trouble unmuting. He's there. He's having trouble unmuting.
Maybe he could do, use his hand up or something on that.
His battery has died. He's, he's called in. And you said he can, he can be heard if he unmutes? All right.
Which one is he?
We don't know.
Can we send him a message on his phone?
I've sent him email.
Mr. Williams, we're trying to figure out which phone you are so we know who's unmuting. Your computer's showing that he's unmuted?
They're all saying they're unmuted, but he could be muted on his phone.
Yeah, we need you to unmute on your, oh, he says aye on the motion, but I don't know how official that is. Since I, we need him to unmute your phone or bring your volume up or something. All right.
He needs to hit star 67.
What was that, Mr. Moyer?
He needs to hit star 67.
Okay, Mr. Williams, hit star 67, please. Can you tell us what that does, Alderman Moyer?
Unmutes on the phone.
It unmutes on the phone, okay.
Never knew that before.
Yeah, learn something new every day. All right. Not working, okay. Alderman Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Actually, I, I need to disclose, and I had gotten a, an opinion from a previous attorney, so I want to make sure Margaret's okay with this. Rule Commercial, while I work for Rule and Rule Realtors, there are siblings that own Rule Commercial. It's not the company I worked for, so I was told before that I can, I just have to disclose, I can vote on things like this. I just have to disclose that there's that tangential thing. Is that, Margaret, is that your opinion as well?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, so I've disclosed that and I say aye.
Thank you. Alderman Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Alderman Williams, were you able to unmute?
I believe so. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yay.
Thank you, Alderman Moyer. And that would be a big aye.
Thank you. Eight ayes, I'm sorry, seven ayes, no nays. All right. Okay, we're moving to number two. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement between the special service area number six board and Quality Construction Services, Inc. for property maintenance services for special service area six for a one-year contract with two one-year options, beginning September 1, 2021.
Madam Mayor, similar to the prior agenda item, this is the approval for a agreement for special service area number six as recommended by the board on the RFP that was really viewed. And then this is for the existing company that has been servicing the special service areas for some time now. Recommending approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman O'Brien. The second was Alderman Went, I believe. Thank you. Discussion. Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion passes. Number three, a resolution declaring city-owned equipment as surplus property.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the police department received an anonymous donation of equipment and they're looking to dispose of and declare as surplus the scopes that have been identified in the proposal. Recommending approval.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alderman Went, I believe, or Schmidt, thank you.
Second.
Schmidt, second by Alderman Macias. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Thank you, that motion passes. Number four, an ordinance amending chapter five ammunitions of the Moline of Ordnances, section 5-1102, license required by deleting portions of subsection A and C to remove limits set on the number of gaming establishments in the city and the number of video gaming terminals allowable per establishment. I believe this is you, Ms. Christopoulos.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, these two amendments come from recommendations by Alderman. The one is to eliminate the number of terminals on premises, which currently states that it is five. That is regulated by state law and currently that is at six. The recommendation is to just eliminate that sentence and have it be governed by state law. The next amendment is to eliminate the cap on gaming licenses to allow other establishments such as bars, restaurants, et cetera, to participate.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Timian?
I would like to make a motion to table this until we can get staff input on this and until further notice, until the staff is able to present a, the recommendation. And we can do research as well.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Any discussion? I, I will say as the person who has to sign those licensing agreements, I would like a little more time to understand the situation and maybe talk with the proposing Alderman so that I really understand what is being asked and how, what the impacts would be. Anyone else? All right, roll call, please. Alderman Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Nay.
I, I'm sorry, point of clarification. Our councilman, the motion was to table. Are we, are you voting to ta, you're voting on that motion, not on the motion on the agenda?
Oh, voting to table it.
Yes. Yes.
Yay.
Can we start over? Yes, I think we need to start over. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
We'll get the hang of it here. I'm sorry, so the motion is to table this item. Alderman Schmidt?
Nay.
Nay. Alderman Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Yay.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. So that motion, so the motion on the agenda is tabled. Thank you. I believe we have another?
Yes, I guess we do, Madam Mayor. There is a pass resolution that was adopted back in March, on March 24th, 2020, and an MOU that was entered into with the Quad Cities Running Club, Inc. regarding the Quad Cities Marathon, which you know is going to be happening at the end of September this year. And in that resolution and in that agreement that the city entered into, they, they based that agreement on a, on an estimate that they had received the month before from River Electric for about $19,000, $19,223. That led to language in the MOU that bound the, the city to provide for the electrical service requirements at the finish line between the Tax Layer Center and the MetroLink, garage, parking garage, I guess is the best way to refer to it as. And where we are today is that that agreement is still in effect in the event that they decide to pull out of Moline. They would be obligated to pay the city the $20,000. Where we are today and what I'm looking for from council is some guidance or direction or authorization in any form that would allow us to exceed the $20,000 based upon the most recent cost estimate that came in today, actually, for $26,000. So it's $6,000, $6,037, that, $26,037 above the $20,000 cap that was established just before the pandemic started. I've also asked our, our interim public works director, Joe Kuhlenbach, to go out and get two additional quotations in hopes that that number may fall below the 20. My big concern is, is that in order to get this project done at such late, at such a late time, it may not be done in time for the marathon and they'd be back to using the generators, which were a reason for the agreement in the first place. So I'm just looking for some guidance.
Mr. O'Brien?
I guess the obvious question, they're going to have the marathon? I mean, it looks like we're going back on the ground here.
That's a great question. I don't, I don't really have an answer.
I believe they are. I'm, it's, I've received no updates that anything has changed and having it in Moline is a, is a pretty big asset. Mr. Went?
Yeah, I'd like us to, direct staff to do it, but charge it to TIF number one to get out of contingency if we need it as, as an advance. But I also, one of the other, and, and obviously this is a weird year, but I want to make sure, one of the other things that was in that agreement was for us to work together with them to have a very robust Friday night event as well with that. I haven't heard if we've been working on that, obviously with COVID and everything. This is a weird, strange world. But I, I know that that was one of the reasons we'll make this investment, but we also wanted to parlay it into more events and more things happening. So I want to make sure that we're working on that towards next year.
Yeah, the, specifically referring to section five of the MOU that states that the city and the QCRC agreed to the co-branding of a festival event to be coordinated and administered by the Moline Center Main Street, which would be Jeff Manis, and to be held on the Friday evening on the marathon weekend. If that's what you're referring to, that is in the agreement.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I understand this year is unusual, but I just want to make sure we're, we're, we're doing that and moving towards next year if we're going to be spending this money.
Okay, I will talk to Jeff.
The special event committee has talked about that, Alderman Went, and yes, that is something we want to work toward for next year.
For this year?
No, not this current one, for next year.
No special event on Friday?
No, not, not this month, not in September.
Okay, did you hear that?
But for 2022, that is the plan. Okay, so.
Awesome, thank you.
You're not needing any particular action, you just want a direction.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, I want authorization to go up to the $26,000 figure that was provided.
I would make a motion that we would do that to go above the authorized, how high is that?
It's $26,037 is the quotation that we have.
So I would include that in the motion to go above the $26,000.
Up to.
Up to.
Not to exceed.
So I thought we already had a motion by Alderman Went and to do that and take it from the TIF.
Well, he, he didn't make it as a motion. He's, he wanted to direct staff to do that.
Okay, well, he's got, I'll second his motion then.
I'm sorry. Can you please state your motion, Mr. Went?
I got, I got it.
I mean, it was a motion to direct staff to, to do it, take it out of contingency if needed, but to charge it to, to TIF number one.
Just the excess amount?
The, the, the excess. The, the, the excess amount, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Because the other is already budgeted, right?
Correct.
Yes, from tourism.
All right.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
All right, motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Any discussion?
I guess I was just sad about the Friday night party not happening.
I know, I know. Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion passes, thank you so much. Moving to our informationals, Mr. For fiscal year twenty-one semi-annual project report, Mr. Vitas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You should have received a copy of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one semi-annual report document, which is kind of the first of, first of its kind. And the basis of the agreement, I'm not going to go through all of these pages with you because I think the, the meeting would last for hours, but, but in essence, what we're looking at doing, as I pointed out in the memo, is, is to start us going in the direction of providing reports on basically goals and objectives that are established in a given fiscal year, and then linking those goals and objectives to not only the authorized budget, but to the strategic plan. So when I first contemplated this document, I wanted to make sure that, you know, every program or every project that was going on based upon the fiscal twenty-one adopted budget somehow got reported between January first and the end of June, so the, the middle of the fiscal year. One of the things, of course, that's difficult is that the strategic plan itself is still fluid, it hasn't been really adopted at this point or finalized. So what we did is we originally attacked this by putting in the original five pillars that were there, and then what we did is we've been fine tuning it back to the three pillars that were basically agreed to at the prior council meeting. So we're already on the way of changing this reporting format for you. And as you'll know, there are obviously start dates and end dates for projects, programs are ongoing, they're funded on an ongoing basis, but they have results that need to be reported. So there's a brief summary down below for each of the respective projects for, for all of the departments. The goal is, is to, is to build off of this document as we, as we work toward the adoption of the budget and an adoption of a strategic plan, and then that will, that will lead to management preparing a work plan based upon an adopted budget that in essence captures everything from, you know, from the funding sources for these projects, to the timelines, to the responsible departments, even down to the responsible individuals, to the tasks, and then, and then linking that, of course, to the adopted budget and being able to report that literally on a, on a month-to-month basis if necessary, or quarterly, whatever we decide works best. We don't want to overwhelm you, so some, some city councils I've worked with in the past are happy with three months, some want to see it just at the end of six months, but we can get to that bridge when we cross it. But this is for informational purposes, and if you have any questions about any of the documents that were submitted by the department directors, feel free to reach out to me, feel free to reach out to them if you like. And, and that's pretty much a wrap on, on what was a big undertaking on the part of the department directors in the last couple of months.
Well, let me say thank you to you for that update and to the staff for doing that work on top of the orientation of you onboarding and all of those things. So, I think in the interest of time, please direct any questions to Mr. Vitas after the meeting, if you have them. We'll move to fiscal year twenty-two CIP, Mr. Kullenbeck.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen with you. Again, I am not going to go over my documents that I sent you last week, slide by slide. I, I get that as a handbook and informational, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out on any of that, and, and I'd be happy to answer what I could. I've had a couple, but not, but not too many. So in this presentation tonight, I really want to kind of touch on the highlights, highlights of what we did in twenty twenty-one, this year, what we have ongoing, twenty twenty-two that I presented to you, touch on some things that are a little bit unique in that, and then, and then going forward again, how we plan to continue to stay ahead of everything, work smartly, and, and continue to grow the city infrastructure. Infrastructure is a, is obviously a huge asset for the, for the city of Moline, there's a lot of capital investment into it annually, and we want to do, make sure that we're doing our best to, to maintain that system appropriately and to the best of our abilities. So what, the screen here is our twenty twenty-one amended capital improvement project list that Carol presented last week. Each of these columns is broken out from what was adopted in twenty twenty-one.
One second, Mr. Kullenbeck.
Is anybody else seeing that?
No.
Low bandwidth issues.
I can handle it.
Okay, hold on.
Please share your screen, thank you. Not having any luck with, we just keep seeing you.
Yep, let me, let me continue to try, try to share it with you. Well, as I get this pulled up, again, like you said, I'm trying to go over an overview here, our twenty-one projects, there were a couple that were delayed for multiple reasons, late start to the design process, some holdups at the state level, I know they're getting a lot of extra projects this year with, with the additional infrastructure money that, that were given, and and so there's, there's been a backlog there as well. So a couple of different things, but Twenty-Sixth Avenue near the school, obviously that one didn't get started, we obviously wouldn't want to start it during the middle of a school year for obvious reasons, and, and so we're prepared next year to begin that, to begin that project and, and continue to work on that, when it's kind of worked best around school. Time, let me see if I can do this now.
Yeah, I think you can refer us to certain pages if we each have it in front of us, or we could open it up for questions as well, Mr. Kullenbeck, if you're having trouble.
Okay.
Mayor, is this one of the?
Yeah, it's not, it's not allowing me to share, it's just, it just keeps spinning on my end.
I think our, our IT is gonna pull it up from the internet.
Joe, can, when you go to share, do you see the blue share button in the bottom right-hand corner of your share screen?
Yeah, there's a, there's a cancel and a share button. If I choose to share entire screen, window, or Chrome tab, it, it, all, the only one that lights up is cancel, I can't, it doesn't, doesn't highlight the share portion of it.
Okay, I think.
Where, is it in the, is it coming?
We're gonna share from the, from the internet, just give us a second. Are there any questions from the council while we wait for that to be up that we could go through right now?
Yeah, I'll kind of continue, like you said, a lot of this may be knowledge that we already have, you know, the Twenty-Sixth Avenue project.
I'm sorry, Joe, I had, I acknowledged Mr. Went's question, so if we don't let him go, then we'll move on.
Sure.
Well, if Joe's got something, I was just gonna fill the, the dead space, but.
That's totally fine.
Joe will fill the dead space, but yeah, I'm gonna continue on. Yeah, so Twenty-Sixth Street will be delayed till, for twenty twenty-three, there are a couple WPC projects after we had some engineering analysis done, there were decisions to reevaluate what we're gonna do there, so some siphon improvements, those were, those were pushback, we're gonna come at that from a different engineering perspective. And, you know, this, this whole process this year kind of highlights the importance of designing and engineering in advance, engineering in advance of a year, two years even. You know, we took a big step in that last week with approving our twenty twenty-two project to be designed by outsourced engineering firms, that, that process is already started, so we're moving in that direction, we plan to continue in that direction. It also highlights the importance of establishing a budgeted plan and maintenance plan long term so that our staff now can continue to design for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four long term, and continue to stay in advance of, of projects. It always helps to be able to pull a project off the shelf, it's not hard to get it out into the hands of our contractors to get those projects started, as long as we have had our due diligence and we understand and we can relay that message to, to the council so they understand where, where their budget dollars are being spent. Any idea, David?
Yeah, you can see it now.
Got thumbs up?
Okay, you can see everything?
All right, we can see it, Joe, the list, we can see the list.
Okay.
Capital projects list. You can have the other one too. Do you want the handbook or do you want the whole project list? Or have you already gone through everything?
Okay, so you're gonna work on, you guys are going off the handbook, okay. I don't have that, I mean, I have it in front of me, but my presentation wasn't, like I said, I wasn't go slide by slide through that handbook necessarily.
All right, how about we just leave the project list up and you just go through your presentation?
Yeah, that sounds good. So you're looking at the twenty twenty-two project list?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to highlight a couple of things in twenty twenty-one, we did a emergency repair in Moline, we had a few streets up there that, in the, in the spring thaw, really had some water issues, the roads were almost undrivable, they were undrivable for some small cars, we got into a situation where it just, we had to do something immediately. Always one of the first projects we bring forward is our action program, it's kind of our Swiss Army knife, we have a lot of details in that where we can, we can bend, zig and zag as we need to, we were able to get in there, core out the bad portions of the road, put in a temporary rock base, and, and then later in the summer come back with a thin asphalt overlay. Now, this is not a permanent repair, this, this repair may last five to ten years, we might be able to stretch that a little bit with some treatments, but it, but it was designed to just get us through, we do have utilities underneath through the place, but that was something we did in twenty-one. Also, something that came up in twenty-one was a ongoing project that the city had, had been working on for several years, it's the Thirty-Fourth Street Railroad improvements. Again, railroad is, can be difficult, they're on their own timeframe, definitely, so when they are ready to go, we need to get ready to go with it, we were able to adjust our programs, get, get the work done on the, on the south side with the Iowa Interstate Railroad, we are working towards the, the north side, Burlington Northern, Santa Fe, hopefully get that done this summer, if not, we, we'll get it done in the, in the spring for sure, but again, we kind of, we're able to be fluid in, in our, in our approach and complete those projects as they become available to us and then, and then, and needs arise. We've done plenty of recently, more so than not, we've done, we've completed our road diet for the year, Sixtieth Street, Fifty-Second Avenue, Seventh Street, and Fifty-Third Street. A lot of these go to our Complete Streets Committee, we identify connectors on our roads, our roads that have plenty of width to them, where we're allowed, where we're able to do some of these, some of these things, and I can assure you that one of the things with the Complete Streets is not only to get that alternative mode of transportation available and more available and more accessible, but it's also, it's a concept in slowing and calming our traffic. Our traffic is going to drive as fast as they feel comfortable driving, and we give them fifteen, twenty-foot wide lanes, we could post it twenty-five miles an hour, but they're going to drive where, where they're comfortable, you know, they're, if it's, if it's wide open and it's a straight, they're, they're gonna go as fast as they are comfortable going, so the Complete Streets policy not only looks out for alternative modes of transportation, but it also encourages that calming of traffic. And with, with the letters and the emails and the phone calls we have received with our, our striving here recently, I assure you it's working, that we're, we're disrupting routines and people are upset about it, and understandably, I, I get it, but that is the intent of what we do, and we're happy to answer those phone calls because we know, we know our, our goals are being met. Infill locations, another thing that'll be brought to you from the Complete Streets program, we added an infill site this year that wasn't identified in, in our long-term list, again, it kind of coincided with a road diet and, and workaround of schools, so our twenty twenty-two infill list, we will bring a list to you before, before the projects go, but that's kind of an ongoing and fluid identifier as well. And so now I'm into the twenty twenty-two, so I can kind of touch on some of, just a couple of these projects I wanted to kind of go over with council, they're a little bit unique in, in our approach, maybe, and some of our estimates have changed as well, so I wanted to touch on some of those. Our Nineteenth Street Bike Path Project, our previous estimates had had it a little bit lower as we're getting our design complete and we're working with IDA and our ITEP, within our ITEP grant funding boundaries, where we're finding that there's gonna be some additional expenses to the city. These expenses aren't gonna be lost necessarily, but they're gonna be additional improvements to Nineteenth Street on the pavement. We were hoping some of the, the grant funding would, would pay for the pavement improvements because it, because the improvements happen to get the bike path in, but those becoming eligible at that point, so there's a, there's an increase in, in that line item for that project from, from previous versions of, of this sheet that you had. And, and then also IDA, we have some improvements that we have to make to our railroad crossings as part of this project as well, so those, so that, that product has increased in cost from previous versions of the CIP, what you have in front of you right now is just up to date. Side notes on this Nineteenth Street Bike Path on September seventh, so next Tuesday at the Moline Public Library, Hutchinson Engineering and, and city engineering staff will be there for a public hearing, it'll be, it has been advertised in the paper, so we can get feedback from the public on, on that project at that time, and anything that we get from that will, will be considered in the design, in the final design. And then on September twenty-first, we plan to have a representative from Hutchinson speak to council and give a update on the specifics of the design, some of the challenges and some of the things that we've come across and, and where we're going with it. So, so in a few weeks, you should have a pretty good comprehensive understanding of this project coming forward for twenty twenty-two. Another project I just really want to touch on quickly was the Thirty-Sixth Street reconstruction. In that slide that I, I shared with you, there's a section of it that, that has a couple of options, one is to reconstruct it and another one is to convert it to a trail. So it's where Eighth Avenue and Thirty-Sixth Street meet up there in that residential area, it's kind of a cut through for, for folks in that residential area to get back down to Fourth Avenue. It was kind of outside the box idea that was brought to us, or that we kind of remember who came up with it even, I wish I could give the, the credit where that was due, but really a good, good way to at least think about it, whether we decide to do it or not. There, there aren't any plans in twenty twenty-two to do anything specifically, I do want council to understand that we are going to engage and, and the residents up there, get public, public feedback, get public comments on this, this is, this is a big change for, for some folks, and we don't want to go about it just because it looks like a good idea on paper, we want to, we're going to get out there and get that feedback so that we understand and you understand that whatever decision, whichever side, direction we decide to go on this road, down the road, that it's, it's been vested and that we're making the right decision for, for everybody involved. But it really kind of a neat, neat thought process, it, it, it's in desperate need of some stormwater upgrades, some reconstruction, but again, it's just a, it is a passer road, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity there to, to think outside the box. Another line item in your twenty twenty-two revenue side of the spreadsheet, you see a line that says road salt funding. road salt funding. Really what that funding is, is a, is a, is a fund transfer. We're able to use MFT funds in the city of Moline for the purchase of salt, for signage that we, signage material that we may buy and utilize. We can use MFT funds for lots of different efforts in road maintenance within the city. And why did, why, why we're bringing this up? Why we're showing this is if we can use MFT funds in a more simple manner, in these, in these ways where we can, we can buy, buy our material that we know we're going to buy, that we always budget. We can then transfer the, those funds from the MFT into, back into the CIP, which we can use local funds in our local projects within our, within our road maintenance programs that we, that we have here. And the reason that's important is it's just easier for us to, to spend local funds. It's kind of like that Swiss Army knife that we use our patching program for. We don't have to jump through some of the hoops. We don't have to make sure it's an eligible MFT expense in order to utilize those funds when they're local. It gives us that flexibility to stay fluid in the year, throughout the year to move whichever direction we need to. So, so we're identifying which of those materials that we always buy, we always budget, can, we can, you know, do a, do a swap so we can give some flexibility to the engineering team throughout the year to, to utilize those MFT funds, just a little bit more simple. Again, we'll, we'll, we'll bring forward the sidewalk infill locations as we discuss those and get closer to it. And then, you know, I shared with you at the bottom of your presentation, I believe, that you're guys are looking at what we have planned for 2023 and 2024. A lot of those projects are either we have design started, we're, we're beginning design. We know they're identified as, as need, areas of need. This is not an all-inclusive list, list by any means. We understand that there are a lot of areas that, that need attention. This is just a baseline. This is, this where I know that our, our staff is going to be getting, designing some of these projects that we, that we feel are highly appropriate for grant funding opportunities that, that we can get that, get that design started so that we're, we're closer to being shovel-ready. Maybe we are shovel-ready by the time those projects come up available for, for funding opportunities. That's always a feather in the cap. If we can have phase one engineering complete and the projects are ready to go, these, the grant deadlines are often four to six weeks. We don't have a lot of time to pick the project, place it, make the application and make it competitive. So the, you know, these are projects that we know we're going to be looking at. And so we'll continue with our, our design on these projects that I had listed here for 2023 and 24. And that's kind of where I'm going to lead into future planning, future process. How are we going to make sure that not only do we stay in, in advance of our, our, our one year of engineered projects, but how do we know what projects we're going to work on in 23, 24, 25, 2033? And in our research, what we, what we've done, what we wanted to do, instead of, instead of getting a, a certain number, a six mile was, was the previous goal, which was, which has, uh, which was grand and gave us a real something to shoot for. But we wanted to make sure that going forward that, okay, we, we know where we're at, we know where we want to go and how do we get there? So all those things have to be identified. A measurable way to accommodate and accomplish that is by, you've heard me talk about PCI, which is Pavement Condition Index. It's a, it's a tool that we've used within our, within our engineering department to identify roads that need repair, you know? And then we go out there and we, we're on the ground, we looked at it and we see the, the large cracks, we see the small cracks, we see the, the potholes, we see the separation of concrete slabs, we see asphalt edges and we see, you know, we look at all that and we rate it zero to 100. We've done that for years. It's a time-consuming process. It's very subjective and it's, it's been a useful tool for us, but, but there are other options out there now that, that make that process more scientific, more objective so that we don't have two different people looking at the same road and out with the two different numbers. What we found is a, several companies that, that drive your streets, they have laser technology, they utilize high-definition cameras, they integrate with GIS, they, they can, they can analyze the condition of our streets. They, they give us an entire network of what our streets are. They complete the network. They, they identify what our, how many residential streets we have. They identify how many square yards of residential street we have, collectors, arterials, private alleys. So all of this in this entire network is, is inventoried, it's rated. And, and from that data, once it's processed into these systems, they give us an overall rating. They give us an overall rating of our PCI throughout the city that we can, we can break it down from PCI for those types of roads. We can break it down that title road within this Tiff district. We can break it down total areas within the Tiff district. So there, there's a lot of tools, there's a lot of reporting that can be derived from this data. And, and that tool is going to give us a baseline. So when we, when we plan our budgets and when we plan our future projects and when we are, when we're doing the CIP, not, not just for 2022 and 23, but for a 10-year period, we, we have the data available to really help guide us in those decision-making processes. Then that was all great news. We, we love that idea. Beyond that, these companies take this information that they collect, they, they, they look at our city as, as a whole. They look at the services that we're able to get, whether it be, you know, reconstruction. Obviously we have the, the contractors capable of building rows, doing asphalt overlays. But some of the other things where there's more preventative maintenance, whether it's a slurry sealer of some sort or micro-surfacing is a word that's, that's, that's been talked about quite a bit. These other types of preventative maintenance projects and, and processes that extend the life of that road a little bit. They'll, they'll help us build that, that inventory of projects that we're able to do in that week, where, that are available to us locally. We associate costs with those. And, and within their, within their software analysis, they can run a bunch of different scenarios for us. They can run us maintenance-style scenarios where most of our budget goes to maintenance and we're just trying to maintain. And it can help us identify projects based on that. We can look at our backlog of roads that need reconstruction that are beyond the, the lifecycle. It doesn't matter what we do to it. We might be able to limp it along with cold patch and this and that just to make it drivable, but essentially it needs to be rebuilt. You know, those, those roads are going to be backed up. We're going to understand how much of that, how much of our roadway is in that condition. And so we can change our budget scenarios dependent on what we get back, where we want to go and how we want to maintain and stay there. So let's say, I've, I've been given a lot of different numbers, but I've, I've been told our national average is a PCI rating of 60 to 65 with a, with a 10% backlog of roads that are, that are just need reconstruction. And let's, let's say Moline's come back and those, those numbers, we can write from scenarios with this software and this data to say, okay, we want to be at an 85 by a year 2025 and we want to maintain an 85 every year after that. And what are our costs going to be? And, and so we can plug into those, these, these budget scenarios, those parameters, it's going to, it's going to help us, it's going to tell us how much we need to budget each year to get to that point and each year to maintain that. It's also going to help us identify the, the locations of those projects. We can, we can identify them within Tiff districts. We can identify them within proximity to each other to, to save on construction costs with mobilities, things like that. So the tool, not only did it give us what we were looking for in that snapshot picture of what our roadway network looked like, so that we had a measurable to, to, to go from and what to attain, that was, that's realistic. But beyond that, they, they showed us all these tools that are becoming more and more prevalent in roadway management that maybe weren't available in the past. And if they were available, that not many people knew about or hadn't utilized them. And I'm really excited about this, this opportunity to, to utilize technology and, and proven practices to help Moline's future planning, long-term, yeah, road network assessment into, into something that's data-driven, into something that we can set goals and, and look and measure whether we achieve those goals or not and continually adjust and, and give, and give scenarios that, you know, that, that are going to help you make the decisions on where to invest and how much to invest in, in your infrastructure. Really excited about that. I forgot to touch on earlier, in 20, in Carol's 21 Amendment, we did put in a line item for, for this software to get started this year. We're, we're still acquiring, we got one more bit to acquire that we've demoed. So we'll have three to, to present, but in the next couple of weeks, I'd like to bring one of these to the council, show you the, the technology and, and would look to move this forward as a tool that we can use. We can have it ready for the summer of 2023 to help us, or it's the summer of 2022, I'm sorry, to help with our 2023 planning and beyond. So really sorry I couldn't share my screen with you that I had, that I had this whole thing worked out. But.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kuhlberg. We do have one question on our reading, Mr. Cervian?
Yeah, Joe, is this a hardware that we own and we strap onto a vehicle and drive around to get the readings or do we pay an outside agency to do that? I'm just kind of curious to know a little bit more of the specifics of how this works.
So it, it works in a couple of different ways or a couple of different possibilities. The ones we'll probably bring is we do not own it. The companies come in, drive the, drive our streets for us and, and they use that data to collect. It's much more high-tech technology and equipment. There are some available where you drive through with a GoPro on your, in your car and it, high-definition videos the, the roads and from that they, they say that they can get a pretty fair PCI on it. We still would need to pay for the upload of that data every time we tried to collect, but it's, it is an option. It's a cheaper way to go about data collection. But I really do think that the, the technology on these trucks and on these vehicles is, is worth the investment to have them come out specifically and do it and, and get a little bit more, I, I think it'd be, I think it'd be a much more, more appropriate data to utilize.
Would, would that be an annual scan or would we necessarily need to do that?
You know, the, the folks that I've talked to, if, if we own it, I would want to scan it twice a year. I would want to scan it before, right before winter, right at the end of our construction season and, and right after we get out of winter. You know, just, I mean, that's really just interesting information I think I would want to have as a public works director to just understand the wear and tear that our winters do. If, if we're paying somebody to come in, they're suggesting we do it every three to five years. The, the software that we would utilize, we can update it with, with the repairs that we do so we can change our, our data in that system to, to reflect the work that we've completed. So it, 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 it changes the PCI ratings and, you know, it shows those improvements within the software. You know, we'd probably want to have them back every three to five years to, to, to do another analysis just to make sure that, I guess initially we want to make sure that our assessments are the same as what the, the equipment's going to read. And it, it really kind of gives, gives you a, a, a good feeling that, that what we're measuring is appropriate.
Any other questions for Mr. Kuhlberg? Mr. Went?
Thanks, Joe. I think this is great. I do really appreciate the moving of as much MFT out of there as possible because clearly that is backlog now and it doesn't seem like it's going to get any better in the future. So whatever you can move out of MFT to, to whatever, that's great. Do you have any concerns about bandwidth for, for actual construction? Because I, I know that the, the bottom line number is 17 and that it's roads, WPC, I mean, it's, it's everything. But I mean, I think that's the highest number I've seen since, since I've been on council. Do you have any concerns on, you know, your staff going out and, you know, writing contractors and, and making sure that, that everything's going right out there with that much going on?
I do. Again, this, 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 maybe I didn't touch on it because I didn't have it in front of me. This is a, this is an evolving document too. As we get closer to our final budget adoption with everything, this will be included. And, and as, as we get closer, Carol and Tony and I will, will sit down and if we, if we have to defer some of these projects even because that, that is a big number where we're spending a lot of funds, you know, it shows storm as a negative balance on that. That's not acceptable either. So there, there is going to be some changes. But if this was adopted as, as presented tonight, yeah, we would, we would have to, we, we could not do all the inspections on it either. So we, there would be some additional cost with inspections on, on some of the projects. And we, we would just pick out which ones we feel are going to be better suited to, to be inspected by outside firms.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. And then one other quick question. I, I think there was, from your preliminary to now, there was a couple of off-street bike paths, the Mississippi River Bike Path from 17th to 19th, as well as the 36th, the one that goes from 7th Avenue or 7th Street over to the, the overpass for, for John Deere Road. Did those get, did those get pushed because of engineering or what was the, the purpose? Because I thought that the funds were available and I thought they were going to be built next year, but.
Let's see. I think it was funding. I think it was the available funding. I don't think it was.
Well, the grants hadn't come in.
Yeah, yeah, let's see.
Are those already engineered?
I believe so, yeah. The, I, I don't know for sure if those are completely engineered. The Mississippi River is, well, the Mississippi River 17th and 19th is being engineered right now. That's part of the Hutchinson project. So that's all part of it.
But that's going to need to be done by next year because 19th is going to be.
The funding's not available till 2023 for the Mississippi River project.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why that one is, is pushed back. The 36th, new one, I think it's funding on that one as well, as the funds. So I, I'm pretty sure that one just got pushed back because of available funding.
Okay, yeah, if you could let us know just if those grants were delayed, that'd be great.
Yes, yes.
All right. Last call for questions. All right, hearing none, thank you so much for Mr. Kuhlberg. Last item on our COW agenda, public comment. I believe we're going to start with, correct, there's no one left outside for live public comment. We have a series of letters that have been received that our clerk will read at this time.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have public comment from Dan Gosa, President of Quad City Federation of Labor and Jeff Deppi, the Vice President of that same organization. We write today on behalf of the over 30,000 union families and over 60 union locals, all who receive the benefit of apprentice training approved by the Department of Labor. These men and women take annual 10-hour OSHA safety courses, CPR, first aid, electrical safety, confined space pinch points and respiratory training, et cetera. Both employees and their contractors receive certificates of completion and their graduation. We are proud union members who understand safety and training and education are key roles in the daily working conditions in the Quad City area. Continuing education for journeymen and women promotes safety with cost savings and less rework on projects in Moline. The RBO language as presented adds no cost and is already a requirement. Now you are asking for documentation of the terms for training and apprentices. Ask yourself as council member or mayor why a contractor would not want to promote safety, education and cost savings for workers in Moline. In closing, we thank you for your time and service to the city of Moline. Next public comment is from Bill Allison, resident of Moline. I am writing in support of the amendment to the city of Moline's purchasing and competitive bidding code requiring contractors to legitimately participate in a DOL registered apprenticeship program. I am a Moline resident and product of plumbers and pipe fitters Local 25. program. I am a Moline resident and product of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local Twenty-Five's Joint Apprenticeship and Training Program. In high school, I took a major vocational classes offered in welding and machining, where I confirmed I would enjoy a career in the skilled trades. Shortly after graduating from high school, I was accepted into the Local Twenty-Five apprenticeship. Through my five-year DOL registered apprenticeship, I earned as I learned, with over twelve hundred hours of classroom training and nine thousand hours of on-the-job training through a Moline-based HVAC R contractor. I then achieved journeyman status between obtaining all licenses and certifications required by our stringent program. The opportunities afforded me by the Local Twenty-Five Joint Apprenticeship and Training Program allowed me to earn a middle-class income, health insurance, and retirement while raising my family in Moline. A yes vote to this amendment would be a yes vote for opportunities for young men and women entering the workforce. Thank you for your time and consideration. Uh, the next one is from Robert Immler um of Born, Texas. I wish to formally go on record in opposition of the proposed amendment to Chapter Twenty-Seven of the City of Moline Code of Born, Texas. I am writing to respectfully request you give thoughtful consideration to formally proposing a motion to table further action on Agenda Item Number Seven to a future date to be determined coinciding with a regularly scheduled city council meeting. I further request that the motion for continuance include language providing for a minimum of the passage of sixty business days commencing August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, prior formally docketing this item for reconsideration by the Moline City Council. Should such a motion be proposed, receive a second, and following a vote of the city council, the motion were to fail, I then respectfully request you cast a vote in opposition to the proposed ordinance, number thirty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-one. First and foremost, I believe the proposed ordinance as drafted will result in increased and unnecessary project costs due to that imposition of covertly biased constraints placed upon otherwise qualified bidders. I am further concerned with the proposed language involving apprenticeships, which is a section two D, allowing for an interpretation which could designate qualified programs as only those programs directly administered by organized labor. Perhaps in my old age, I have become more cynical, perhaps having to do with living for three-quarters of a century. Councilman O'Brien, with all due respect, I would not be surprised to learn the impetus behind the proposed ordinance itself, as well as the proposed language, may have been heavily influenced by one or more units of organized labor. Councilman Macias, at the very minimum, I would request the language involving apprenticeships have a greater degree of specificity to include those apprenticeships offered by all recognized trade associations, regardless of whether affiliated with organized labor or not. Who could possibly object to such inclusiveness? I am certain you, the members of the city council of the city of Moline, wish to be as inclusive as possible, to also be known for being the best stewards of taxpayers' funds as well. During my time in the Quad Cities, some of you may remember one or more of the collaborative partnerships I was involved with, each with a goal of expanding the level of inclusiveness, helping to build upon previous successes, and striving to improve the Quad Cities for all citizens fortunate enough to call such a unique place home. I believe everyone deserves to be included. I am confident you and I share that same belief. I thank you in advance for your time and consideration. In closing, I'm hereby requesting these comments be read. The next one is from Jerry Lack, Executive Director of Tri-City Building Trades Council um of Rock Island, and Nick Flogel, Business Representative, Carpers Carpenter's Local Number Four. A responsible bidder on city public works projects should be required to participate in apprenticeship and training programs that are approved by the U.S. Department of Labor Office of Apprenticeship and Training. Workers in certified apprenticeships receive skilled skills-based education that prepares them to perform at the highest level on public and private sector projects. U.S. Department of Labor OSHA studies have shown that contractors with certified apprenticeship programs have safer work sites and lower accident rates. I am sure you can all all agree that quali- quality-trained workers and safety are essential for successful public works projects throughout the city of Moline. Adding the apprenticeship program training program requirement to the city of Moline's Responsible Bitter Ordinance will allow Moline to join the city of Rock Island and many other communities in Illinois that require contractors to provide a certified apprenticeship training program to participate in public works projects. We are especially supportive of the requirement that bidders provide evidence of apprenticeship graduations over the past five years. Some contractors claim to have an apprenticeship program by their by their record of graduating apprentices, I'm sorry, but their record of graduating apprentices is very poor. The members of the Tri-City Building Trades Council and Carpenter's Local Four would appreciate the support of the Moline Council in amending the Responsible Bitter Ordinance to include a certified apprenticeship program. The next one is from Brian Dockery, Vice President of Community and Government Relations, Riverstone Group Incorporated. I am adamantly opposed to the proposed ordinance changing Chapter Twenty-Seven, purchasing of the city of Moline Code ordinances, to require bidder certification regarding apprenticeship training for certain public works projects. It is the responsibility of the city of Moline, hereafter referred to as the city, to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money to award all contracts to the lowest responsible bidder. I believe the city has done a good job awarding contracts with the ordinance that is currently on the books for the last few decades, so I must ask, why is the proposed change important to make at this time? I've been informed that city staff didn't even draft the proposed changes, and that they came directly from the operating engineers of Local One Fifty. The proposed changes will decrease the amount of contractors qualified to bid contracts in the city and limit competition, which will in in return increase bid prices. I do consider this as a direct attack on our company and some of the customers at the expense of the taxpayers, which we also are one. I don't think any municipality should be used as a tool by the operating engineers Local One Fifty to backdoor the unions' organized efforts. The city has the right to pass what they think is appropriate and best for taxpayers. I urge all council members to deny the proposed changes created by the operating engineers Local One Fifty. We, as a company, have had a great working relationship with the city for over one hundred years. Uh, the next comment is from, also from Riverstone Group, um, and this is from Vice President Mike Ellis. Many of you may also know us by our former name of Moline Consumers Company, which we changed in two thousand and one as part of an overall company update. Moline Consumers was founded by my great-grandfather in eighteen ninety-two, when he harvested ice from Mississippi River in downtown Moline and sold it to local residents for for refrigeration during the warmer parts of the year. Today, Riverstone is no longer harvesting ice from the Mississippi, but instead a major supplier of construction aggregates across the Midwest. The primary use of these products are in the bridges and roads throughout the area that many of us use on a daily basis. We therefore understand the rigors of operating a business in a competitive environment in Illinois. Since our inception, we have been a major stakeholder in the city of Moline and operated multiple businesses in the city, such as building materials, sales, ready-mixed concrete, beer and liquor distribution, and owner-operator of the Leclerc Hotel for several decades. While we have since sold off most of these businesses to focus on our core business of construction aggregates, our focus on building a better Moline has been unwavering, as we still operate multiple business units in Moline and are a major landholder of property strategic to the city's long-term plans for downtown. It is for this reason that I write to you today to discuss an issue that I believe is not being given the proper attention it deserves. The issue I'm referring to is ordinance thirty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-one, which will put the city at a competitive disadvantage by effectively restricting project bids in the city to only companies which are sign- are signatory to unions. For full disclosure, our company has both union and non-union locations, and we respect our employees' decision to determine how they are represented. Furthermore, many of our customers are also on both sides of the fence, and we can tell you we appreciate their relationships, and I can attest that both types of companies have done quality work around the Quad Cities for many years. Unfortunately, I will, I was not aware of this issue until late Friday of last week, when one of our customers, knowing I am an advocate for the betterment of Moline, asked me about this. I immediately assumed he was wrong in what he told me, but to my great disappointment, realized he was correct. An ordinance is being proposed that would lower competition and increase costs for the city. Once I became aware of the issue, I went back to review past council meetings to better understand the issue and found two major items that I want to bring to the attention of the council and mayor. First, I heard multiple times this ordinance was reduced, will reduce costs by requiring trained workers. My response is that I have worked directly with many union and non-union contractors. There are good ones and bad ones on both sides. I fully support training and education, as I personally have degrees in both engineering and business. However, simply requiring a company to pay money to a union does not automatically make them more qualified than one who does not. In the trades, the best experience is learned on the job, whether this is through an apprenticeship program approved by the Department of Labor or something that has been passed on from one generation of hard-working masons to the next. Both are great ways to learn and can be equally effective in providing quality training. Second, I heard that this language was written by the Foundation for Fair Contracting and not city staff. You may be surprised to learn that this organization is closely tied to a union, more specifically, the Local One Fifty operating engineers out of Chicago. In fact, the Foundation for Fair Contracting resides in a building that is owned by Local One Fifty's pension fund, which is located adjacent to its headquarters. This is important because I believe it means they are effectively trying to use the city of Moline as an extension for their organizing efforts. This attempt at manipulation is deplorable and should not be tolerated by the city. One of the fir- very first things that I heard from Mayor Raya Putty was really, which really impressed me, was that she believed in transparency, inclusion, and working together in government. This is true of not only the mayor, but also the city council. I respectfully request that this issue at at the very least be tabled, so our company and others can work with city staff to make this language so it is inclusive to all responsible contractors, not just those that pay to play with union dues. In its current state, our company may also be subject subject to disqualification from doing business with the city, as most of our operations in the Quad City area are a non-union, and we sell various construction materials, such as crushed stone and asphalt, directly to the city. I also believe that many other Moline businesses are unaware of this very important proposed ordinance, and thus should have additional time to become informed and reach out to the respective aldermen. I expect that after Riverstone, most of these businesses also oppose burdensome regulations that arbitrarily put some companies at a competitive disadvantage. In the long run, this ordinance will reduce competition, drive up costs, and hurt everyone, businesses and taxpayers alike. This is such a critical time for future redevelopment downtown. We at Riverstone urge you to reconsider this ordinance. It will worsen the business environment in Moline and will economically det- be economically detrimental to the city. Thank you for your consideration. The next comment is from Andy Weir with Indiana, Illinois, Iowa, Foundation for Fair Contracting. My name is Andy Weir, and I am the Regional Manager for Illinois and Iowa at the Indiana, Illinois, Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting. We are a nonprofit construction industry foundation established to increase market share for responsible contractors, work opportunities for skilled craftsmen and craftswomen, and value for taxpayers. My statement today addresses two key points. First, I discuss research on the value of registered apprenticeship programs to the people of Illinois. Second, I present the need to strengthen the city of Moline's Responsible Bitter Ordinance to include an apprenticeship graduation requirement of five apprentices within five years. Registered apprenticeships are training programs that help businesses in Illinois find skilled workers in high demand. Sponsored by employers, joint labor management groups, and union and unions, registered apprenticeship programs offer on-the-job training and certified classroom instruction. Participating apprentices get the opportunity to earn while they learn with minimal or no out-of-pocket costs. In return for this significant investment, employer employers have access to a pool of skilled and productive workers tailored to meet their needs. From twenty eleven to twenty nineteen, the number of active apprentices increased by forty-four percent in Illinois to more than seventeen thousand apprentices. In the United States, participants in registered apprenticeship programs earn about one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, more in wages and fringe benefits over their careers than similar non-participants. Apprenticeship training also reduces a construction worker's chance of suffering a spell of long-term unemployment, saving government entities thousands of dollars in social safety net safety net costs per apprentice. Apprenticeship training is particularly important to the construction industry in America. Through registered apprenticeship programs, construction operates the largest privately-financed system of higher education in the country. Nearly all of this investment, however, comes from joint labor management programs funded by union labors and signatory employers. Joint labor management programs account for ninety-seven percent of all active construction apprentices in Illinois, ninety-five percent in Wisconsin, ninety-four percent in Indiana, and ninety-three percent in Minnesota. Registered apprenticeship programs provide significant value to Illinois. The programs directly create nearly five thousand total jobs, almost three thousand jobs for instructors and program staff. The programs boost the Illinois economy by more than one point two billion dollars, resulting in an eleven-dollar return per dollar invested in the state. It is worth noting, however, that there are important differences between construction and apprenticeship programs that are jointly sponsored by labor and management and those that are funded solely by employers. Joint labor management programs train ninety-seven percent of all construction apprentices in Illinois. Joint labor management programs also are also more diverse than employee-only programs, enrolling ninety-eight percent of all women, ninety-nine percent of all black and African-Americans, ninety-eight percent of all Hispanics and Latinos, and ninety-seven percent of all military veterans. Notably, the average apprentice from a joint labor management program earns about forty dollars per hour, which rivals a four-year bachelor's degree. Joint labor management apprenticeship programs are a proven way to lift all blue-collar workers out of poverty and into the middle class. A Responsible Bitter Ordinance is a policy that ensures public expenditures reflect local standards of quality and craftsmanship. An RBO acts as a protection plan for taxpayers based on objective criteria and verifiable standards. The city of Moline passed an RBO in January of twenty twenty with the requirement that the lowest responsive and responsible bidder participate in an apprenticeship and training program applicable to the work to be performed on the project which which are approved and registered with the United States Department of Labor's Office of Apprenticeship and Training. Unfortunately, some registered apprenticeship programs recognized by the U.S. Department of Labor are simply paper apprenticeship programs, not programs that are established in the community. A fly-by-night contractor may temporarily create or sign a document with the U.S. DOL-approved apprenticeship program to meet the criteria, but then never invest any money in the program or train a single tradesperson. This violates the intent of the ordinance, which is to use verifiable track records of success to guarantee that construction projects funded by taxpayer dollars are built using professional competent contractors. Contractors that have paper apprenticeship programs often fall within the employer-only segment of the industry, typically have only a handful of apprentices and even fewer graduates. This segment of the industry, which requires sixty-three hundred hours of training, has a thirty-one percent completion rate in Illinois. In particular, the Illinois chapter of the Associated Builders and Contractors has graduated just sixteen percent of the trainees in its apprenticeship program since two thousand. By contrast, joint labor management programs in construction are more rigorous, requiring seventy-three hours, I'm sorry, seventy-three hundred hours of training, twenty-seven percent more, but still have a fifty-four percent completion rate since two thousand. This is on par with the graduation rate of public four-year universities, which is sixty-one percent, and better than private not-for-profit universities, which is forty-three percent in Illinois. The city of Moline's RBO is required with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder participants in a U.S. DOL-approved apprenticeship program that graduates at least five apprentices in five years would strengthen the ordinance. To be clear, graduating five apprentices every year is not a difficult task for established apprenticeship programs with proven track records of success in the Quad Cities area. It is only a challenge for fly-by-night contractors with either paper apprenticeship programs or poorly-funded apprenticeship programs. This amendment would simply ensure that public works projects This amendment would simply ensure that public works projects are being awarded to responsible contractors who seriously invest in developing the next generation of skilled construction workers in our community. Responsible bidder ordinances are an effective way to improve employment conditions and living standards of construction workers without significantly raising costs for taxpayers. Projects that are covered by responsible bidder ordinances have 8% more bid competition and are no more costly than projects built without RBO standards. By updating the city's RBO with apprenticeship criteria that enhances worker skills and improves work site safety, the city of Moline would strengthen the construction industry and ensure that responsible contractors are awarded projects delivering the best value for local taxpayers. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to submit my statement. And he lists several sources of the information he has provided. And, Your Honor, I have one more that is on a different subject. And this is from Roger Clausen, who has a state-owned business at 836th Avenue. And this is in regard to the requirement for a sidewalk. "We, the office owners on 36th Avenue, for over 28 years are excited and very grateful the city is fixing our street with a new surface and storm drains. Thank you." "We realize there is a city ordinance to provide for sidewalks when this type of work is done. However, as owners of these office buildings, we do not see the need for a sidewalk. This is a dead-end street in a commercial area with no residential foot traffic. These offices serve specific customers that drive to them. We do expect, I'm sorry, I think he means we do not expect or anticipate clients to ever walk through our offices. The cost of a sidewalk to nowhere, its continued maintenance with no usage, is an unnecessary cost. Concrete parking lots, sidewalks, driveways, streets, when all connected, and especially in a secluded area such as this, could present other issues similar to what we had to resolve many years ago with skateboarders. We invite and encourage you to visit this business street and consider a variance to not provide a sidewalk." And that is all I have for public comment.
Okay. With that, we close out the, we have the whole and move to our city council meeting. Pledge of allegiance, please, in your spaces.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation, Mr. Schmidt?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Alderman Walter is absent. Alderman Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council on Executive Session Minutes of August 24, 2021, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on August 31, 2021. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3022-2021, an ordinance adopting the Moline Public Art and Placemaking Plan, Designating the Downtown Moline Public Art Program Area and Amending Various Chapters and Articles in the Moline Code of Ordinances, as amended, establishing provisions for the governance of the city's public art program. Resolutions. Council Bill 1180-2021, a resolution authorizing a variance to Chapter 34, Water and Sewers, Section 3300, when required of the Moline Code of Ordinances, waiving the requirement at this time that 3720 Fortieth Street Court connect to the public sanitary sewer, granting the petitioner or property owner permission to repair or replace the septic system until such time as the sanitary sewer is extended to serve properties on Fortieth Street Court, and as condition of approval requiring the petitioner, property owner, and successors in a signs to agree to connect to the sanitary sewer at such time as the sanitary sewer is so extended to said property and to pay at that time the equitable share of such public main extension attributable to said property and to record these obligations against the property. Council Bill 1181-2021, a resolution supporting a food truck event with Western Illinois University. Council Bill 1182-2021, a resolution amending Budget Resolution Number 1148-2020 by amending, I'm sorry, by authorizing various changes to line items in the fiscal 2021 budget and authorizing the Finance Director to do all things necessary to complete said changes. Council Bill 1183-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a local public agency engineering services agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for design services for 2022 capital improvement plan stormwater projects on a time and materials basis for a not-to-exceed amount of $95,039. Council Bill 1184-2021, a resolution authorizing the approval of a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code of Motor Fuel Tax, for Motor Fuel Tax, Section Number 210028300ES, stormwater projects for the amount of $95,039. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Alderman O'Brien has motioned to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. I'm sorry, was that Alderman Williams? Yes.
Macias.
Macias, sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't announce that. No problem. Alderman Schmidt? Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3023-2021, a general ordinance amending Chapter 27, purchasing of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 3100, competitive sealed bidding to require bidder certification regarding apprenticeship training for certain public works projects.
Your Honor, I move to approve Council Bill General Ordinance 3023-2021.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt? Discussion?
Your Honor, if I may?
Sure. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. Over the past few weeks, I have compared the proposed language of this bill with other municipalities in the region. And in almost every case, each municipality that has an apprenticeship requirement has an ordinance that is uniquely tailored to meet the realities of their area. Despite our intentions, the proposed bill before us was introduced on the council floor without staff input. I have attempted to find language to repair it, but fixing the wording is no substitute for proper prudence and due diligence. It is my opinion that Moline is best served by us starting this process over and using the proper process. Because of this, I will not be supporting the council bill tonight. I do vow, however, to work with city staff and city administrator to find a solution for our concerns around work quality and promoting local work development that will fit the realities of the city of Moline. With that, Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to call the question.
Second.
Motion to call the question by Alderman. Timian seconded by Alderman Went?
Moyer.
Moyer, thank you. Roll call, please. Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Excuse me, I think that we're voting on the motion. The motion as stands, so you're voting to pass it or not pass it?
Your Honor, we're voting on a motion to call the question, not the motion itself.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for correcting me. Thank you for correcting me. The motion is... Clarification on what that means. We've not done that before. The clerk is saying we need a clarification on what that means. Margaret, I'm sorry, could you? Margaret?
Close debate. We're voting to close debate.
Do what?
Yes. Okay. We're voting to close debate. Thank you.
Close debate.
Thank you. Okay. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldrin?
Is absent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Six ayes, one nay. Okay. Debate is now closed. We move back to the motion of, the motion by Alderman O'Brien and Alderman Schmidt. Roll call, please. Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Two ayes, five nays. The motion does not pass. We move to resolutions. You reading those? Yes, thank you. Resolution 1185-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement between the Special Service Area Number Five Board and NAI Rule Commercial Company for property maintenance services for Special Service Area Number Five for a one-year contract with voluntary renewal each of the following two years, beginning September 1, 2021.
Motion to approve?
Second, Moyer.
Thank you. The motion to approve by Alderman. Timian seconded by Alderman. Moyer. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Council Bill 1186-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement between the Special Service Area Number Six Board and Quality Construction Services Incorporated for property maintenance services for Special Service Area Number Six for a one-year contract with voluntary renewal each of the following two years, beginning September 1, 2021.
Motion to approve. Macias? Second, Went.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman. Macias seconded by Alderman. Went. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. First reading ordinances. Council Bill 3024-2021, an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Police of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 2101 to 2319, to reflect the replacement of the position of captain with the position of deputy chief and remove all instances of the term captain. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you. We move to miscellaneous. We start with Mr. Williams. Do you have anything this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. Mr. Macias?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have one quick thing. I know last week we had had a discussion regarding the non-enforcement of parking downtown. And while I had received an email from Jeff Manus indicating that there hadn't been any businesses or any complaints about it, I had missed a, an email from the chief, and I had asked that that be sent out to everyone, everyone, that there had been some complaints between May and now. I think it was a total of maybe five in the downtown and then possibly another 12 if you kind of pushed it all the way out to 26th Street in the downtown. So I just wanted to clarify the record because I really want, you know, what is said on the council floor to be crystal clear and truthful, that there was, in fact, a few complaints with the police department over a long period of time. I think the argument stands where it was, but there had been a few complaints on parking to the police department, and I had missed that email. So I just wanted to clarify that record.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to thank the public works and engineering departments for the addition of the new bicycle lanes that Joe had mentioned on 60th Street, 53rd, 7th Street, and 26th Avenue. Coincidentally, almost all of those are along my normal route, so I've been riding on them repeatedly over the last few weeks, and I think they are a great addition to the community, and I look forward to more. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Well, color me surprised. I'm surprised that there's some members that voted for the responsible bidder ordinance twice and then in the interim just decided that they didn't want to support it anymore. I'd like to talk to you later on. I think we missed an opportunity to make Moline the leader in this with providing apprenticeships, training, high-quality construction projects. And, you know, I don't know, I guess going back on it, if you need more time to think about it. I don't know what can be done in the future. I guess you can bring it back in the future if you have enough time to study it and make sure that you're okay with it. And moving on from that, I have one other thing. I know it's 9:05. Behind 41st Street and River Drive, there was a major cleanup project that I got some calls, and it was kind of the afterthought that, I mean, I got these calls and emails, and I went down there, it was already done. It was already cleaned up. Now, they did, I think they left some trees and stuff, but residents had, and I know it's probably railroad right-of-way over there. It's either railroad right-of-way or it belongs to the city of Moline. Probably not, you know, you know, their property, but they were utilizing that property, and some would argue improving it. They planted gardens, and one lady said she had raspberries or something over there. Well, they took all that out. And I know it has to be cleaned up. And I'm certainly not against cleaning up in that part of town. I'm definitely a pro doing that. But it seemed like it was kind of a thing that happened really quickly. And I know the residents were mixed on what they wanted to do with that property, but it seemed like it happened really fast, and by the time I got down, it was already done. Now, I understand city staff is just doing their job. They're doing what they, you know, we tell them to do, but I just felt like I was kind of blindsided by that. And it's all gone now. Whatever people had growing there is gone now.
Have you followed up with him at...
Yeah, if I could learn more about it, something they had a community garden of some sort going on.
That's all, Your Honor.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I just want to say thank you to all of the staff for working to get this ready for our change in meeting venue and making that work. I know it's been a while since there's been need for so much out-of-the-office attendance. And as my first one, I appreciate how smoothly they've been able to make it go. So thank you to our staff for their help in that. The other thing that I wanted to ask about is one of the items that we had last week was specifically, was a repaving project happening on 36th Avenue. And that was in the consent agenda last week that included the addition of a sidewalk. And we did hear a letter this evening from Roger Clausen, one of the business owners on that street. They had, he, along with the other business owners, had submitted a petition looking, asking for variance. You know, and I took some time to go and go drive through the street and talk to a few of the business owners and hear their concerns. And, you know, I think they, their point of it not being so necessary, I think runs into, you know, our desire to really focus on making Moline up to be a an inclusive place and a place where you can access through sidewalks at all the times. And I think, you know, when I really came down to it, I think we should go ahead as it's currently planned. But I did want to bring it up this evening just because I think that, you know, when citizens are getting engaged in bringing to us, you know, petitions and those things, it is, it is worth it to...